All right, folks, it's 5:30, so we're gonna go ahead and call our board meeting to order. Good afternoon, everyone. Great to see you all. Looking forward to another fantastic meeting, as well as our summer, our extended school year, for those of you that are with students with disabilities. So I know we still have a lot of kids out there going to school right now, and a lot of staff that are working. So just want to say thank you to all those that are out there working right now. We'll move on to 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance, and it says, "I get to choose someone today." Mr. Husky, have you led us yet? All right. Ms. Alexander, have you led us yet? Oh, thank you so much, Ms. Alexander. We love the enthusiasm that you show. Just because of that enthusiasm, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Everybody place their hand over their heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Well done. Well done. All right, moving on to 1.3, approval of the agenda.
Second.
It is moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Husky. Any discussion or items to be pulled? All right, here and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on the agenda. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 1.4, Inspirational Message, and it's by our Vice President, Mr. Danny Tillman.
Thank you very much, President Wyatt. I just want to emphasize how blessed we are to live in San Bernardino, California, in the United States of America, which is the richest country in the world, and we live in the richest state in that country. And that's the reason why we're able to have a billion-dollar organization that provides education to our students. And I really think that there are times that we lose sight of that. So I wanted to just tell a personal story about my family. You know, growing up in San Bernardino, there were two addresses as an adolescent, 1212 West Seventeenth Street, which was about a block off of Mount Vernon and Seventeenth Street, and then 1543 Parrish Street, which was on the corner of Parrish and Evans on the west side of San Bernardino. I was the youngest of five kids, and my mom and dad had two totally different personalities. My dad's whole thing was an authoritative person and told you, "Education was everything." And he, now, we never had a lot of money, because although he graduated from Cal Poly Pomona in 1969, every time he got a job where he experienced discrimination or racism or something wasn't right, he would quit his job. So most of the time, we didn't have a lot of money coming in. I remember going to get commodities from, in the boxes with Spam and peanut butter and powdered milk that I hated. But my mom was just overly loving and attentive. I mean, I, my mom stopped holding my hand when I was strong enough to pull it away forever, forever. So I was 18 years old. She always held my hand crossing the street. So we, I'd had this supportive environment. But my dad had this formula where he told all of me and my siblings that we were gonna go to San Bernardino Valley College and then transfer to a four-year school. He told us all that. You're gonna go to San Bernardino Valley College, and you're gonna transfer to a four-year school. And we all did that. We all went to Valley College. We all transferred. All of us graduated from Valley. Three of us graduated from a Cal State also. My oldest brother, who passed away early, ended up working in Hollywood, doing what he wanted to do, working in film, graduated from Northridge also. My sister, Blondale Tillman, worked in the district for many years, was an instructional aide, loved her children, loved what she did, but she also graduated from San Bernardino College. And I think sometimes we lose sight of the opportunity that is here. And I just want to tell the students and the parents out there, that system still exists. I mean, if your child goes to San Bernardino Valley College and transfers to a four-year school, the chances of them being successful are very, very good. It's not, it's not complicated. It may not sound glamorous, but it works. And so many times, we lose sight of that. And our district does everything we can to prepare our students to enter those institutions, and you all do a great job at it. And we have the connections. Right now, you can, all our students can go to Valley College for free. The Pell Grant is paying about $3,600 a semester now. That's because we have this rich country and this rich state that provides that for us. So I just hope we don't lose sight of that, and, and, and spread the word. And if you know, folks, you know, there's a lot of young people who, even though maybe 18, 19, came out of school, aren't sure what they want to do. And they might only need that conversation that you have with them to say, "Hey, there's great opportunities. Let's go down there and enroll at San Bernardino College." Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Some wonderful words of wisdom, and we're following the same words in my household as well, because my son's at Valley College. Started at San Diego State, came back, said he's happy back home, happier at Valley College. And his goal is to go to Cal State San Bernardino. So really appreciate that. All right, 2.0, Special Presentations and Recognitions. We're gonna move on to 2.1, Link Learning Gold Pathways Recognition. The Board of Education wishes to recognize San Andreas Business and Technology and Health Science Pathways for earning the prestigious designation as Link Learning Gold Pathways. And at this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Anna Applegate.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Good evening, Board and fellow Cabinet members. I'm so proud and so excited to welcome staff from the Educational Services Team and from San Andreas High School, as they showcase tonight a gold pathway that you will also be very impressed with. Our goal here in SBCUSD is to ensure purposeful pathways for all of our students, and this definitely is one to showcase. I'm pleased to bring Dr. Van Contestin to the podium, so she can tell you a little bit more. Let's give Dr. Van Contestin a welcome. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Board President Wyatt, Superintendent Ariano, Board and Cabinet. And thank you, Mrs. Applegate, for those words. And I'm very happy to be here tonight to celebrate our Link Learning Pathway at San Andreas High School. Get this, Board, they are the only, only continuation school to receive, to be gold-certified in the entire nation. So we do have a special guest because of that, in order to speak about how, what a great achievement that our school has done. And going back to Mr. Tillman, what you said about, there are several ways to go to college, and you know, and San Andreas is really like kicking it out of the park in terms of how well they take care of the students. Also, I would like to remind the Board about the presentation we did last February, and then we talked about the three stools, you know, and then how, I mean, three legs of a stool, and how it is important to have preparation, not only in the academic priorities, also the college and career part of the leg, as well as the career pathways. Or, so that is what, the career pathways is what we are gonna focus on for today. Tonight also, again, we talked about, like, they will be highlighting how their journey on how they achieve this gold certification. It came with a lot of hard work and the collective efficacy of the teachers and the admin team working together. And currently, actually, we have 10 gold-certified pathways and 16 silver pathways at San Bernardino City Unified. And this is a very rigorous process that the schools have to meet out, out of the 53 pathways that we have in existence. And also, many of the pathways that we have are currently, you know, making sure, how do we increase the rigor of each one of our pathways, so that we can all go to the path of silver certification, gold certification? And I know San Andreas is still working towards platinum now. Okay, with that, I would, at this time, I would like to invite Ms. Rattan for, you know, to say a few words. I know she's the proud principal of San Andreas High School, and later on, we, also, my ASSR, Assistant Director for Secondary Education, College and Career Unit, will be saying a few words about the Link Learning Alliance. Thank you all.
Good evening. So the awesome thing about us being a business and technology academy is we have the two pathways underneath us. And so we decided this year not to just go for one gold pathway, but to actually go for two gold pathways, which is pretty amazing. So we did have to do the certification for both pathways when Link Learning came to visit us. So they were there checking to make sure that our health pathway and our business pathway did meet the rigorous standards. And Birdy, our Link Learning Program Specialist, which I am so grateful to you that you extended the Link Learning Program Specialist to both San Andreas and Sierra last year. It has made phenomenal difference. We actually have Sierra's Link Learning Program Specialist in the audience, and she's ready to go for gold soon, but they're, they're working towards that also. And so the, the thing I just wanted to highlight to you guys tonight is that the, the pathways have made a huge difference for our students. So a lot of the times before, they were just graduation. Graduation was their goal. That is no longer their goal. They're looking beyond that and looking beyond the future. And our pathways really have given them the opportunity to think beyond and to not just settle in, it's okay if they want to exit and go get a job, right? But a lot of the times, we're saying, "Okay, what job are you gonna get?" "Well, I wanna work in a warehouse." "Okay, so we're gonna get you forklift certified, because instead of making $16 to $18 an hour, you're gonna be forklift certified, and you're gonna be making $24 an hour." So we're trying to really push them to get those different certifications, so that they can really get a leg up into their future. And so the awesome thing is we do have three students that I wanted to highlight and introduce to you tonight. The first person is David Ponyagua. He was part of our business pathway. He was an 18 to 22-year-old student in our transition department. And in our program, he had the opportunity to be involved in many hands-on activities, community events. He's now involved through an internship, which is with Night Owl Bay and Inland Regional Center. So he is an intern on San Andreas' campus through Night Owl Bay, so he is actually an employee through them. And he is also actually a member of our school site council, along with his mom, Alba. And we love her participation, still in our community. She's also here today. And then we also have Alida Barrera. She was in our business pathway, and she was also in our career club, along with Jocelyn Ortiz, who was part of our health pathway and was also part of our career club. And those two young ladies, I'm so excited to let you know that they are actually currently in the CNA program at ICEC. They will be finishing in the next, how many weeks, Ms. Fig? July 28. So we actually rushed. We actually graduated them a week early. We worked with their teachers to get them graduated a week early, because ICEC's program started a week before our students graduated. So we didn't want them to miss that opportunity, so we ensured that they had everything that they needed to be actually a San Andreas graduate. And then we were like, "You guys are ready to go. Come on, let's go." So they've been in that program every day, five days a week, wearing their scrubs, and they're, they're here to talk to you a little bit about what they've been doing since they've actually graduated this year from San Andreas High School. So please welcome Ms. Figueroa and our students.
I think first, we're gonna have Alida Barrera speak, just for a moment.
Okay. This is exciting. Hi, my name is Alida Barrera. I graduated from San Andreas. My main goal was to graduate, but I got out with so much more. I did the business pathway, and I also joined Ash Tech, and that taught me about technology and, oh, wait, plants. I really like San Andreas, because the teachers there really showed their time and effort and really put more time in students. If you needed help, they had no problem to stay with you. The career pathway helped me in many ways. I learned, I got so many certificates, a marketing certificate. I didn't know I could do marketing, but I passed it. And like she said, in a few weeks, I will become a CNA. Woo! We're really important. Don't mind helping people, showing love to the people that don't really get it all the time. And we did go to clinicals last week. That was our first time. Hands-on skills, nice teacher as well. San Andreas teachers also had really good communication. They taught us like an adult and gave us attitude like an adult. Didn't treat us like kids at all. And like she said, I will be finishing my CNA on July 28.
Thank you, Alida. Next, we have Jocelyn Ortiz.
Hi, my name is Jocelyn Ortiz, and I graduated from San Andreas. Yeah, I actually moved, I graduated a year early, and my goal was to fit, to complete the healthway pathway, actually, which I did. Yeah, I'm very happy about that. Yeah. And then they, over there, they really help us. Yeah. My goal was to go to the, finish the healthway pathway, and then go to college and go into the nursing program. And my plan was to go to college, you know, and then like, I had a plan, but it wasn't like, out there, you know? I was like, trying to figure it out. But they, the teachers really helped me make my plan, and they're helping me accomplish it. They put me into the CNA program, which wasn't something that I planned, but it happened, and I'm grateful that it really did. And I finished on the 28th of July, and after that, I'm gonna go to Valley College. And I actually got a scholarship with San Andreas. Gonna get the whole year paid for, and with that, I'm gonna get my prerequisites done and go straight to RN. Yeah. 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 And the teachers there really help you. They help you. They don't put you down. If you need help with understanding, they'll gladly help you to understand the subject better and finish your goals. Yeah. They really help.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. And last, I would like to introduce, not that he needs an introduction, but David Ponyagua.
So how's your day been? I am David Ponyagua, and I work at a business and technology program. And it's incredible. I'm just gonna say, it's incredible. It helped me so much grow as a person. It helped me increase my, my learning skills. I'm learning, I learned so much, incredible things about growing plants and how to harvest them and all that. And before, before I joined the program, I didn't, didn't like, I always liked to talk about this story. I didn't like eating vegetables, because I always liked to eat junk food. But since I learned so much, since I first joined, since I, I got to learn so many incredible and educational and amazing things, I, I like to eat an eggplant. And I was like, "Hey, I'm thinking about eating an eggplant. Can I eat that eggplant?" And I said this, another thing I like to say, is that this microphone's too small for me. And, no, why I always, I always like to say, I remember saying this, but I, it's, the program feels like a, feels like a dream that I didn't want to wake up from. Because it's, I am just grateful to meet so many wonderful and supportive people, like, like my teacher, Barbara Passacek, who has been incredible to me and, and very supportive of me, and to my mom, and, and supportive to everyone. And even, even if some students like me have disabilities or in any conditions, they still want us to join the program and learn so much. And now I got, now I got the chance to help, help do some photography, like taking pictures and videos of some, some of the, the events that's going on in the, the program in San Andreas. They would, they would ask me to, "Hey, hey, we want you to help us record some footage and take some pictures." So, so they would let me get, get my phone and just record all the incredible stuff. But even sometimes, when I see something I like, I'm just like, click, click. Is that a horse? Click. But yeah, it's, the school is just incredible. And San Andreas is just an incredible school, because it, it brings people together. And in the program, we, we are growing hope. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you too much. You can go ahead and have a seat. Thank you so much. So at this moment in time, I need our CTE Chair, Jade Smith, to please stand up, and Dory, I also need you to stand up. They're gonna play Vanna for just a moment. Again, good evening, School Board, Cabinet, and, and to our community. As you have just heard, San Andreas is working to not only assist students in recovering credits and graduate, but we are working, we're dedicated to help our students reach college, find meaningful employment, and ultimately fulfill their dreams. So all of this could not be possible without our wonderful community partners. And so I would like to recognize these partners. I'm gonna show you, we're about to give them this crystal award. It's a small token, but it, again, these partners, they have really dedicated their time to the success of our students, and we, we want to thank them and recognize them for that. So if we could, please, our first industry partner, could we please have Beard Realty? They have supported us. We have to go up to the front. Sorry. Thank you. You're gonna come up to the front, and please remain standing. We will be taking a picture right afterwards. So Beard Realty has supported us with accessing resources in the community and sponsoring our career and health fairs. Scott Beard, thank you for coming up, and thank you for all that you do. Please remain standing. Our next partner, and I'm hoping they're here, Teamsters Union 1932, has sponsored us. They have participated in our career events. They've helped students connect to the workforce. Becky Lippens and her team, will you please come up? Thank you for all that you do. Our third partner is American Medical Response, or AMR. They have participated in so many of our career events. They come into our classrooms and work on skills with our students. We can't thank you enough. Robert Costner and Andy Serban, please come up. I know I mispronounced his name. Thank you, gentlemen. Please remain standing. Our fourth and final partner that we're going to recognize this evening is Night Owl Bay. Night Owl Bay has been our partner for over a decade. From their industry expertise to working every day with teachers and students, Cheryl Anderson, Chris Hadamio, she does have a team. We thank you. Thank you for all that you do and for all your time. All right. Did you want a final? Okay. Thank you for that. And now, Dr. Alan Kay will be taking over.
Good evening, Board. President Wyatt, Superintendent Ariano, Board and Cabinet. As you've just heard from this amazing students and staff at San Andreas High School, the Board's vision of ensuring the pathways in our schools is a focus has actually true benefit. As you've heard tonight from our students and our teachers, it's clear how San Andreas has really taken this call to action and created true college and career opportunities for their students, and for that, we couldn't be more proud. This hard work doesn't go unnoticed. As you may already know, our partners in the Link Learning Alliance certify our schools, who have created high-quality systems within their college and career pathways. A few of these quality systems include creating and maintaining strong partnerships with the local community workforce, clear alignment to rigorous academic and industry standards, along with student skill sets that prepare them to meet employer expectations. And so that, and with that in mind, I would like to introduce Mr. Dan Storrs, our Senior Director for K-12 Engagement with the Link Learning Alliance, who is here to officially announce the certification status for San Andreas High School. Mr. Storrs.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Kay. And what a joy it is to be here, as we reflect on the, the talent and the promise of the students of San Bernardino, and particularly of San Andreas High School. So, as we so eloquently heard from the students just a minute ago. The voices and the perspective that we've heard are so powerful, as we recognize the impact and the power of educators and students in this incredible community, including the students that we just heard here, and also another student, Destiny Corino, who was a Link Learning Student of the Year this year. The gold pathways that we are celebrating today are making a huge impact. Students are working harder, and they are dreaming bigger. So I'd like to present a couple of certificates in honor of the, and recognition of the gold certification of the two pathways, Health Sciences and Business and Technology at San Andreas High School. So I'd like Birdy, Roberta Figueroa, and Jade Smith, representing the Business and Technology Pathways, to come up to receive the. So the biggest thing that we hear time and again from Link Learning students is that they feel seen by their peers, heard from their teachers, who they work with every day, and that they value their education more than ever before. In addition to high quality college and career pathway work that is being done across the San Bernardino City Unified School District, San Andreas, as Dr. Van Contestin said, is the first continuation high school to go through the process and achieve gold certification and meeting all the standards. And I really have to thank them. And they were the ones who said, "We wanna do it." We've never had a continuation high school do it. And so we worked with them and to really take a look at their program and how it differs from the other high schools. And it was a fantastic experience, and they met every one of the requirements. So, and as a result, to their attention to equity and excellence, they've generated insights and inspiration and evidence, actually, on what works. And they are a model for the state and the country for what they do. And so for that, I'm very grateful, and we are all very grateful. So keep learning and growing, and again, thank you so much. Dr. Kay, thank you.
Right. Thank you so much, Mr. Storrs. So the dedication and partnership that you and the Link Learning Alliance have shown to our district is deeply appreciated, and we look forward to even more of our schools earning their gold certification. At this time, we also have At this time, we also have and would like to acknowledge our elected officials as they prepare certificates of recognition. And so I'll just have Ms. Stratton come up and receive these if you'd like. But we've received certificates of recognition from California State Senator Rosilis, I'm going to mess this up. I knew I would. Rosilisi Ochoa Bog, California State Assembly Majority Leader and 50th District Assembly Member Eloise Gomez Reyes, and San Bernardino County 5th District Supervisor Joe Baca Jr. So there you are for those. And their support at the local, regional, state level is critical to really the success of these programs, particularly as decision makers and policy drivers. So we look forward to increasing access to our students and their ability to be well-prepared for college and careers. Again, a great round of applause for San Andreas High School Principal Stratton, along with her team. Specifically, I want to call out a few of them as you heard, Linked Learning Program Specialist Roberta Figueroa, CTE Chair Jade Smith, Pathway Lead Barbara Pastechek, and Pathway Lead Debbie Tivie for all of their hard work. So we thank you. And with that, Dr. Wyatt, I'll turn it back over to you.
All righty. Thank you, Dr. Kay. Great, fantastic presentation and an amazing job by our San Andreas team for Linked Learning and definitely it's always nice to be first in the nation on anything. I would say that. Maybe we should get a little bit more recognition for that program as well. You get the media and the press out here to highlight that if we haven't already. But at this time, we're going to invite the rest of the board, Superintendent Anna Applegate, Dr. Van Kessin, Dr. Kay, Ms. Stratton, Ms. Pastechek, but I don't see her here. I don't think Barbara's here. Ms. Figueroa, and then our students and Dan Storrs for a group photo of pride. And Ms. Tivie. Thank you.
We'll also ask our business partners who, if they would like to join the picture to us, please.
All right. Great job again by our San Andreas team and for everybody else involved in Linked Learning Gold Pathways. Just absolutely amazing accomplishment. We're going to move on to 3.0, Public Comments, and then 3.1, Receive Public Comments. All right. This is the only time to public. We have an opportunity to address the board on items that are not on the agenda and are within the board's subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided, no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. All right. And our first public comment, and I know they're taking pictures back there, so I'll probably wait for a little bit. But it's Beth, and I apologize if I don't get started. Kent? Kent or Kent? Welcome and good evening. Come me out with that one, Beth. I always like to get names right, so Kent. Okay, fantastic. I like that tip.
Thank you. Thank you all. Good afternoon, San Bernardino Unified. My name is Beth Kent. I'm an RSP teacher at Del Rosa Elementary School. I've worked at Del Rosa 18 years, which has been a privilege and where there is always a great need. Throughout these 18 years, I've been a member of every regular committee, chaired the special ed team, managed SSTs, reading labs, social events, and more. I've worked with seven different principals, six vice principals, and many interim administrators. We've had a routine turnover of administrators over the years. Apologize. I've seen the qualities of excellent administrators in an elementary school. One must have at the least three basic characteristics. Strong skills in communication, organization, and rapport with staff. How would an administrator survive without these skills? Or more importantly, how could one circumvent these skills if they're missing? I found that those who circumvent weaknesses become bullies or tyrants. They create fear or they leave. A tyrant instigates division, discourages staff from meeting, or handpicks committee members and avoids transparency. They surround themselves with their friends and avoid others. The comparison between strong and weak administrators, as well as teachers, is observable. You certainly must have noted this as well. I have to mention now that in the last year and a half, the inconsistencies and struggles I've been faced with are a result of deficits in these areas. I prepared an outline of 20 noteworthy concerns, but I'm going to share three today. If you remember, I said I'm a special ed teacher. For seven years, I've worked with the best school psychologists and speech therapists the district has. This team was highly effective, the best I have ever associated with. This team has now been disbanded by the administrator. There was no need or reason for the change. My second concern has to do with the RSP program. In most elementary schools, we use a pull-out model. The pull-out motto has been predicated by scientifically-based research. A push-in model has not been an effective model in my experience. Based on an arbitrary decision, the administrator has proposed that a push-in model should be now used. I will expect that proposal to be in writing and justified by data or research. This is only logical. I will not be responsible for providing inadequate or inappropriate services to the students in my care. Their parents might also have concerns. And lastly, a third noteworthy concern is about the new construction. Some of you may have even attended the ribbon cutting at our new office building and MU room on January 31st this year. Having been there 18 years, this was a pretty big deal. The school staff were not invited to the ceremony. We weren't given a tour of the building. We were not given keys to the building and we were locked out of the building for nearly six months. We had to knock to gain entry. The rooms are disorderly and must be hastily cleaned if a meeting is held there. The administrator does not maintain an office in this building. I don't know if that's what you expected after spending millions of dollars at Del Rosa. What do I or Del Rosa or any school need from you? Staff input, a way to communicate with the district when we can't communicate through the administrator. No one wants to come here and speak like I'm doing now. Why have we not been provided with an administrative evaluation survey this year? Has anyone been given that? Why is there no mediator regularly sent to schools to ensure there is good staff and administrator relationships? No one wants animosity at their work site. I don't. Administrative change. What does it take so long before a change in administrators is considered? Are you hoping they will magically develop these skills that they might be deficient in? A struggling administrator surely has skills that would be useful in a different setting and would provide a chance for them to shine. You should be hearing happiness echoing from the wings of our schools. Teachers love their jobs. Almost all teachers have these three basic skills, but regrettably are often supervised by those who don't. I'm at the end of my career and I'd love to see better days in the next school year. I can't speak for my colleagues at Del Rosa or other schools who struggle with this, but we do deserve your considerations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Appreciate that. All right. Our next public comment and speaker is Ms. Corinthia Williams and Mia Cooper. Welcome. Good evening and welcome, ladies.
Good evening.
Good evening, Board, Board President, Vice President, Superintendent, Board Members, and Cabinet. We're coming to you tonight. We want to say thank you for sending us to the Community and Family Conference that we just came from Philadelphia. And while I was able to attend the one last year at Long Beach, a lot of the parents and staff were not able to attend. However, the conference showed us getting together as a community and building that community school that we're looking to do. But I do have to say, our school district is one step ahead of everybody. They were amazed with all the things that we're doing here. And I even ran a booth, a Restore Justice booth. This lady asked me to do, and I just ended up taking over and I got her. Some people signed up. But she was even amazed by our Restore Justice system that we have here and all the great things that we're doing. And I know a lot of times we go to these conferences and we don't really hear back of what's going on, but just know this conference here is a really big conference and it's really showing us that we're moving in the right direction. We have all the pieces to the puzzle, but now it's just time for us to put it together and come together and make it a whole. And we could actually be one of the model schools when we do that because a lot of the schools are at the ground level of just trying to put it together when we're already doing it. My only request that I have when we go back next year is that family engagement, do a class and do some type of training that they have. That would be what I, that's one of my asks. And that's one of my asks moving forward when we go to these conferences, that it's time for us to step in a room and start training because we're way too advanced to be sitting there and listening to what they're trying to put together. Ms. Williams?
Well, good evening, fellow Board members, my lovely Superintendent. So as Ms. Cooper was stating to you, first of all, I am so happy and so blessed to be working in this district. And I've never, as a parent, as a student, everybody knows, I'm from San Bernardino. I don't waste no time. I'm from the West Side. And so, you know, we keep everything real. Dr. Wyatt, and I would address you as Dr. Wyatt, Board President, I'm so proud to say that, used to be my principal. And it's a thing, you guys, when I came to this district, I was broken. And a lot of people helped put those pieces back together for me. This community engagement and the Community Day and family engagement, I wasn't quite aware. Because when you tell me Community Day, Dr. Wyatt knows, I'm thinking the community schools, the county schools. So I'm like, why are they trying to get Community Day schools? And then I started putting it more together because I'm like, I always tell them, I'm special ed. I'm a product of special ed. So I must say, when I attend these meetings and they understand I have a lot of questions, I'm confused, they have no problem with redirecting me. So here we get to a conference in Philadelphia with well over 3,000 participants from all 50 states. So give you guys the magnitude and envision where we were at and what we were into. As we're attending these workshops and I'm hearing these people talk about, how do we go about getting the parents hired? We need to get some parents working. We're already doing that. We have parent advisories on every school campus. Or how do we go about getting medical and stuff into the schools and go about, we're already doing that. We have Hazel Healthcare. And so all these things, as they're being presented and coming, it's like, I felt like we stepped back into a time warp in Philadelphia. It was like time had stopped there. When we visited their schools, you saw that their districts were manned predominantly by the charter schools, not the school district. They were mostly charter schools and CPS that's running their schools. And so they're really struggling. All these districts are struggling. You have 1,001 districts in the state of California. Seven of those states, out of California, out of the state of California, you have seven counties. Well, within those counties, everybody was represented from every city. And so when they called San Bernardino, I believe we had 20 participants there because they had California. Then you got with your state to go and meet. And I network a lot. I do a lot of talking. Those of you that know me, I talk. And so when you sit there and we saw all of these things, they're telling... Oh, because there's two of us to get five minutes each, right? Okay, I'm sorry.
Start it again for five minutes.
When we look at these things and I seen what was going on and how everybody was back in time and how San Bernardino has stepped up, and I don't know if this board is aware of what you guys have, because you're always probably hearing the negatives. Well, I'm here to tell you the positive. And there's a lot of positives in this district, in your management even. It's changed. It has changed a lot under this umbrella. I am so proud to be a part of that parent, the Superintendent Parent Advisory Committee that I was invited into. I didn't know what it was. And we get there and we got these people that come in and the first thing they say, there are no titles. Take the titles off. You're like, oh man, we in here with the big dogs. There's no titles, Ms. Williams. Take the titles off. And what I wanted to do, because I'm so grateful that these people really did for real take their titles off. I challenged them. And Dr. Wyatt knows me well. I will challenge you. I will say, you know, will you do this? If you say this, be a person of your word. Because I'm a realist. And if you say something to me, I expect it to happen. I want to say and present something that I did on my own. Nobody knows this. They're all probably like, what? I told, I called six other people and I said, can you be, I texted them actually, the email. Can you be present to support me at the board meeting as I'm speaking? They didn't know I was getting something prepared to give to them. And I want to tell you guys, and I will get choked up because it's so special to me. Dr. Rodriguez has been there for me no matter what. I told her I wanted to go back to school and get my master's degree and to be a counselor, my master's in counseling. She thought I was talking about going back to school to get my high school diploma. I'm like, no. Like, what? I have a bachelor's. How dare you? I have a bachelor's, how dare you? But do you know immediately, like that, two hours later, she was emailing me, I talked to the guy at the adult ed and he's gonna, he's willing to bring you in so that you can get your high school diploma. Well, talk to him about me getting my master's. But she did it immediately with no problem. And because of that, Dr. Rodriguez, and she's always invited us at the meet, I want you guys to go to this Community Day Conference. I'm like, for real? Yes, because you guys need to see what's going on. She has been there, you guys, and she is a true soldier to this district. And I'm telling you, she puts on no airs. She comes into that meeting and it's just like, this is just her. And at this time, Dr. Rodriguez, I'd like to give this to you. And it says, "Dr. Rodriguez, this special rose is just for you for always being kind, accepting, caring, and true. San Bernardino City Unified School District has hired a real jewel." So these I have made, they all say the same for each one. Dr. Funches, I have to tell you guys. I felt I was being mocked and I was really hurt because this person that's supposed to be the upper echelon was to me making fun of me not understanding what was going on in a meeting that was so confusing to me. And they were like, well, I said it's a high level meeting, it's a high level meeting. You tell me something is high level, that doesn't tell me it's going to move fast. You tell me it's like classified or something going on at high level, not it's moving fast and it's confusing. So Dr. Funches, as he went along, this person kept saying, yeah, well, the meeting is high level. Dr. Funches, can you speak at a high level? And can you do, one thing I can give to this young man, and he probably didn't even realize how, because I was getting ready to just get up and just leave. But Dr. Funches had actually, okay, he had actually said, okay, enough of that. He said that to that person. And I was so grateful for you for saying that because it was breaking me, because I was finna say, I don't even want to be at these meetings anymore if this is how you're going to treat people. So I want you guys to know, Dr. Funches.
Ms. Williams, why don't you have Ms. Cooper give them the award so you can keep talking in the microphone? They can't hear you when you're walking over here.
Okay. And then, and if somebody they don't know, because they're going to be surprised, who do I have? Ms. Benoit, she's not here, she left, she's a, uh, duh, 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 duh. Colleen Williams. She's another one that they have with LCAP. I've learned so much on what's going on with LCAP and how everything works and how it goes and the whole bit. And Colleen, I just thank you for being here. Okay, I'm gonna make it quick, I got two seconds. Ah, Cheryl Tagashi. She didn't know. I'm on so many committees, you guys, with this district, I never knew I would work so hard. But Cheryl, I wonder about the community, district advisory, I'm sorry. So at the district advisory and all, I'm there. And then last but not least, Dr. Beatrice Gonzalez, Ms. Family Engagement herself, who has brought us all together and has taught us be family. I always tell them, you guys are so open and I feel so like a family. I feel really, you guys, like this is my home. I feel like ownership. And, you know, you don't, you don't get that in a lot of places. And I want you guys to know, you have San Bernardino hired some jewels. I don't know what goes on behind the scenes, I don't want to know. Because that becomes a headache. But I want you guys to know and honor those, because you hear the bad, you never hear the good, that these hard workers are doing, spending their time and they're making sure that the community, the parents, I'm a parent, I'm a grandparent, I'm a foster parent, you know? I got you. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Appreciate it. Great job. Thank you. Hey, our next public speaker is, looks like Ms. Janelle? Janelle? Or is it Jeanette? Jeanette M., I can't, how do you say the last name? McKay, oh McKay, okay. Jeanette McKay, welcome.
Good evening. My name's Jeanette McKay. This is my husband, David, and this is our daughter Caroline. Just gonna take this off, it's easier. We're here tonight because we wanted to come talk about the Fellowship Art Program that San Bernardino Unified School District is partnering with the Arts Connection and the Garcia Center. When we saw the posting, we were also excited because we knew that Caroline would really enjoy this experience. I was then told that she could not attend because she was not a student at the district. I tried to explain that she attended Chavez in the beginning of the year and unfortunately got sick. And the virus set off an autoimmune response, which caused Caroline to be hospitalized twice. Unfortunately, sending her back to an in-person school was not an option since the district had dropped the masking requirements. We asked the district if they offered an online program that gave her the same courses she was taking. And I was told the gifted classes were not offered. So you were not able to give her the classes she needed, so we had to look at other options. It was a hard time for Caroline. She missed her school and her friends. She's always been a great student who loves learning and she's always loved art. She's been drawing and painting since she was two. And I think that art got her through this hard time and helped her with her recovery. Partnering with these organizations that enrich our community and all of our community, not just the kids that are going to the brick and mortar school, should have been better thought out by you. I bet Caroline is not the only kid that through no fault of her own was not able to stay in an in-person school. Now that she's trying to integrate back into the community, only to have walls and barriers put up from the very community that's supposed to be serving our children. We just went through a pandemic. People suffered, experienced loss. To not acknowledge this with this programming is shameful. I ask that you do better. And I would like to thank the organizations, like Arts Connection, the Garcia Center, and Rainbow Youth Alliance, who are actually doing programming for all of our community. Thank you.
All righty, thank you very much. Excuse me, ma'am, before you leave, did we get your information and did you, did you, is there a program you still would like your daughter to be in so we can follow up to make sure? And did we have your information? Can you leave it with, uh... Thank you. All righty, and I believe that was it for in-person public comments. We should have one online public comment and it looks like it is Ms. Rebecca Harper. So I'm not sure if we have somebody on the online comments. If so, let's go ahead and welcome her.
Hello.
Hey. Good evening. We could see you and hear you. Good to see you.
Okay, good. My name is Rebecca Harper and I am a retired employee of your district, but I am a constituent. I live in San Bernardino. And I am here to speak to you regarding the building that you're building for Student Services right behind the BOU. And the reason I'm speaking about it is because I have found out that certain members in my department or my former department will be working out of cubicles instead of offices. I don't personally have a problem with cubicles, but I have a concern about the quality of service that we would be providing, parents and students, when we cannot assure confidentiality. We work with very sensitive issues. For instance, I had a student coming in from Dino Hall to be re, to come back into our district. And I found out in my meeting that he had committed murder. And I could not, in good conscience, put him in a regular school knowing that. But what if he, if this conversation had happened in a cubicle, would he have been upfront and been truthful with me and given me the correct information so that I could make that kind of a judgment call? I don't know. A couple of weeks ago, one of my colleagues also had a student who was a suicide risk. And the, my colleague had to do a suicide risk assessment. That is not something you do in a cubicle. We deal with a lot of sensitive issues with attendance, with bullying. We have conversations with parents, we have conversations regarding students. Sometimes parents name other students that should not be done in a public setting. These kinds of issues are very concerning to me. When I first started the department, I actually shared an office with two other hearing members. And every time a parent came in to speak with us, we had to walk around looking for a private space to conduct our meeting with the parent and the family. That is not good confidence service. And especially if a parent is very upset to begin with when they come into our office, to go around, walking around looking for a space to have a conversation with them is, it doesn't help the situation. Parents get even more angry and more upset because they're not being served as quickly as they need to be. So I'm saying all this because I know the district is going forward with plans for the building and I wanted to make sure that those things are considered when planning for how the building's going to be set up with offices for staff. The people on the bullying intervention team, they really need private space because, like I said, they deal with bullying. They also walk, they also speak to parents and students a lot. They also hold meetings. Kind of hard to hold a Zoom meeting when you're in a cubicle. That needs to be done in a private, the office doesn't have to be there, but just small enough to hold a private conversation. Also, the hearing panel, we do a very sensitive issue. Lots of discipline issue. We have parent concerns come in to talk to us about different things. We also do bully screening while we're there and lots of other issues that we deal with. And it's hard to conduct a conversation and serve the student well when you don't, can't assure them confidentiality. And I think that is the main thing that we are concerned with. Also, our attendance people, our SOD girls, they also do lots of, when they're asking parents why the students aren't coming to school, that's personal. That's very confidential. That's not something that should be done in a cubicle. So from what I hear, they're trying to provide two meeting spaces? That's not enough. That's not going to help with confidentiality. And like I said, there's, there's four hearing panel members, there are three bully intervention team members, and right now, three SOD girls. All of them, if they were all meeting with people, two meeting rooms won't work. I think that's something that I would like the district to reconsider. I did mention this to Dr. Rodriguez in an email a few weeks ago. So she knows, she knows where I'm coming from. But I did want to make the board aware of what our concerns are. And I really...
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harper. We do have one question from one of our board members, Vice President Tillman. Are you still there?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, great. I really want to commend you for speaking tonight. I mean, I retired from the county last week. I don't think about it again. And so it, it, it really is a testament to the love that you have for our students. And we hear you loud and clear. And I know the building isn't done yet, but I understand your concerns about making sure we have private areas and I can assure you that will be addressed.
Thank you. And I'm always going to be an advocate, even if I am retired.
Yes, I love it. Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
We appreciate you, Ms. Harper. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I believe that's it for public comments, correct? All right, fantastic. We will move on now to 4.0, public hearing, 4.1, public hearing and adoption of the SALPA Annual Budget Plan and Annual Service Plan for 2023-2024 Special Education School Year. So let me go and close open session. I will now open a public hearing for item number 4.1, Public Hearing and Adoption of SALPA Annual Budget Plan and Annual Service Plan 2023 through 2024 Special Education. Are there any public comments?
There are none.
All righty. Read it be resolved, the Board of Education approves and adopts the SALPA Annual Budget Plan and Annual Service Plan 2023-24 Special Education, authorizes Anna Applegate, Assistant Superintendent, Educational Services to sign all required documents. Move.
Second.
It is moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Rosales Medina. Any comments or discussion? All right, hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries. That was an easy one for our special ed folks. Great job out there. Way to go. All right, we're going to move on now to 5.0, closed session. 5.1, closed session, public comments. Do we have any public comments?
No comments.
Thank you very much. All right, then we will go ahead to 5.2 and recess the closed session. Thank you. All right, folks, we're going to go ahead and cause the meeting back in session. We'll go, 6.0, acts reported from closed session. 6.1, approval of middle school principal. Be resolved, the Board of Education approved appointment of the following employee, Shannon Cabanas, Cabanas, middle school principal, school site effective date, work year and salary to be determined, funding code 035. Shannon, are you here today? Hey, there you are. And did I say it right or no? Cabana, Cabanas? Okay, so it's not the roll on the end then, it's Cabanas. All right, well, congratulations, Shannon, and welcome. All right, we will move to 6.2. Oh, sorry, no, we have to have a motion and a second. Sorry, I didn't make, yeah, you wanted to get that one done.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Avios. Any discussion? All right, hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. Congratulations. Now I get to say congratulations, Ms. Cabanas, and get the name right as well, so, welcome again. All right, let's move on to 6.2, approval of elementary school vice principal. Be resolved that the Board of Education approved appointment of the following employee, Carlos Avina, elementary school vice principal, school site effective date, work year and salary to be determined, funding 419.
I'll vote.
It is moved by Ms. Avios, seconded by Vice President Tillman. Any discussion? All right, hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote.
Mr. Tillman?
Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to 6.3. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Let me just say, motion does carry, but is Mr. Avina here today? All right, he is not. He's not? Okay, well, congratulations if you're watching out there, hopefully you are, and welcome to the team. We'll move on to 6.3, expulsion of students. Be resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of the hearing panel based on review of the panel's findings, the facts, and recommendations in order to expulsion of the following students by identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900. Will move?
Second.
It's been moved by Vice President Tillman, seconded by Ms. Alexander. Any discussion? Okay, hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries, moving on to 6.4. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves and accepts the following students are recommended for expulsion. If expulsion is deemed inappropriate based on due process errors, insufficient evidence and/or the availability of other means of correction in compliance with Education Code Section 48900. Therefore, all that are recommended for expulsion, expulsion is not granted.
Move.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Chuhusky, seconded by Vice President Tillman. Any discussion? All right, hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries, moving on. 6.5. Be resolved, the Board of Education authorized the readmission of following students with identification numbers as indicated below to schools of San Diego State Unified School District in accordance with the board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Chuhusky, seconded by Ms. Alexander. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries, moving on to 6.6. Be resolved, the Board of Education authorizes expulsion and/or youth court modification, expulsion or rescinding of the following student by identification number as indicated below to schools of San Diego State Unified School District in accordance with the board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900.
Move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Vice President Tillman, seconded by Ms. Rosales Medina. Any discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries, we'll move on to 6.7, other closed session action. There is no other closed session action, so we'll move on to 7.0. Report by union organizations, 7.1, San Diego Teachers Association.
No report.
There's no report. Thank you very much. 7.2, California School Employees Association.
No report.
All righty, 7.3, Communication Workers of America.
No report.
7.4, San Diego School Police Officers Association.
No report.
All right, four for four. Thank you very much. 8.0, reports and presentations, 8.1, Energy Management Program Update. All right, and we'll welcome our team up here and Mr. Precy, welcome. And you'll be doing the presentation and leading our MOT squad today.
All right, good evening, board. We're a board president and board vice president and cabinet. It's our pleasure being here this evening. Uh, we are here to give you guys our annual energy program management update and a lot of the fantastic initiatives that we've implemented. Freight and warehouse corridors in the area attract thousands of diesel trucks daily that contribute to the nation's worst ozone and air particulate pollution. The American Lung Association recently released its annual state of the air report and San Diego County is ranked first for the worst ozone pollution in the nation. And also ranked in the top 10 for the worst annual particulate pollution nationally, according to the report. Uh, both ozone and particulate pollution can take severe toll on persons' health, causing inflammation, shortness of breath, chest tightness, damage to airways and can lead to asthma, cancer and premature death. So what you're here tonight is the district's annual energy management program update as well as the many wonderful initiatives we're implementing to help do our part in reducing greenhouse gas emissions and improving San Diego City's air quality. Next slide. So we're going to have a program overview. We'll hear about what our environmental impact looks like. EPA awards, which you've probably seen as you're coming into the building tonight. Um, some of our energy reduction strategies. Our solar system program, which is probably leading the state and electric vehicles and what our implementation plan is going to look like and what the capital costs are going, going to be from, from the district. Uh, with that, next slide, I'd like to turn it over to Aaron Emmons. He's our energy specialist. And with me also is Tom Pace, our Director of Facility Services.
We stand before you today to share remarkable achievements in the realm of energy conservation within our school district. Over the past 11 years, through our dedicated efforts, we have accomplished extraordinary milestones and I'm excited to present to you. First and foremost, I am proud to announce that our energy conservation initiatives have resulted in an astounding $50 million in savings. This significant amount of money can now be allocated towards improving educational programs, enhancing facilities and investing in our students' success. Not only have we achieved substantial financial savings, but our commitment to energy conservation has also had a profound impact on our building's energy performance. Despite a 19% increase in square footage from the beginning of our program, which is in 2012, to, due to construction of new schools and modernization, we have successfully achieved an impressive 38% reduction in energy use. Compared to the national average, we are 26%, 26.7% lower. This achievement is a testament to our district's dedication to sustainability and responsible resource management. Next slide, next slide, please. Through the concerted efforts of our energy conservation and solar initiatives, we have achieved a remarkable annual reduction of 24,860 metric tons of carbon emissions. That's on an annual basis. Let me put this achievement into perspective for you. This reduction is equivalent to almost 64 million miles driven by an average gas-powered vehicle. More than 4,800 homes' electricity's consumption for an entire year or over 3 billion smartphone charges or over more than 1 million bags of waste recycled instead of being sent to landfills. The significance of these figures cannot be overstated. By reducing our carbon emissions, we are actively contributing to a cleaner, healthier environment for our students, staff and community. Our efforts have a tangible impact that extends beyond our immediate surroundings. These achievements would not have been possible without the combined efforts of our district leadership, administrators, teachers, staff, students and community members. Our collaborative approach and shared commitment to energy conservation have propelled us to these remarkable heights. Thank you.
Next slide, please. And I think we've shared this before, but just wanted to put this up as part of our energy presentation. So we have 49 buildings that qualified this last year for Environmental Protection Agency's Energy Star Award. This is after the EPA increased the difficulty in order to receive accreditation. So this is really outstanding. We're number one in the state for K-12 institutions. And we're also number five in the nation. So out of the 14,700 school districts, being number five is pretty darn good. So this is really a testament to all these people's great work and everyone that's out there within the district as well as the cabinet and uh board members, leadership. I really appreciate everything that you guys help do for us to help push us forward and have this wonderful. And you guys probably seen all the awards out in the front. So we'll package all those up and we'll send them out to the school sites that receive the award. Next slide, please.
As we modernize, construct and maintain our facilities, we've learned one thing, that energy reduction is not a binary problem that has one solution or strategy that can be implemented. Uh, that it requires a multi-variable approach. Uh, and you can see that over the past 15 years, as we have embarked on adding new schools and modernizing them, uh, we've looked at a variety of different ways of reducing our energy consumption. Uh, and I think to Aaron's point, uh, in the previous two slides, we showed that after adding 14 new schools and all of our building additions and adding air conditioning, that our energy expenditures have not gone up, rather they've gone down. Uh, and I think that's a remarkable achievement for the district as a whole. Uh, and we just quickly want to remind you of our solar initiative because I think it bears repeating the good work in support that this board has given us uh in the exploration of our solar initiative. Uh, so on the net, oh, perfect, we've already moved the slide forward. Uh, so in total, uh, we believe that we have 21 megawatts of potential electricity uh that we can produce through our solar panel initiative. Uh, on the next slide, uh, you'll see a breakdown. So we currently operate 24 sites with solar. Uh, we're in construction for two of them. Uh, and we have 13 more planned. Uh, you may wonder why the total is 41 and not over 70 for the amount of sites that we have. But many of our sites are too small to support the amount of solar economically uh that we would need to put on the site. So we're going to aggregate those sites into one large off-site facility so that we uh get the benefit of the green energy. Next slide.
All right, then moving into our electric vehicle, first thing we're going to talk about are the regulations. So we have from the executive order regarding the 2035 carbon net zero goal. And that's going to be for all passenger and light duty trucks for sales. So this won't impact existing fleets. However, they are looking at a 2045 where 100% of the medium and heavy duty trucks will need to be sold are zero emission. In addition, California Air Resource Board just a couple of weeks ago passed a new rule. That's the Advanced Clean Fleet and the regulation. And that does recover the medium and heavy duty trucks. This does require them to be completely transitioned by 2045 where feasible. Next slide, please. Kind of give an inventory of what we currently have in our fleet. We have 330 vehicles across the district. That includes nutrition services, warehouse, police force, maintenance and operation and other departments that have a, a small number of vehicles. And they vary in size from light duty, medium duty and heavy duty vehicles. Next slide. So what is Advanced Clean Fleet? It gives us two pathways of implementation in order to be in compliance with the new California Air Resource Board. So pathway one shows that a 50% purchase of all new vehicles that are coming into our fleet by 2024 have to be zero emission. Then in 100% of our purchases are required to be zero emission vehicles by 2027. There's a second pathway in order to be in compliance. And you'll see the time chart, it actually goes out. And what we did is we included the number of vehicles from our fleet that qualify for the medium and heavy duty that would have to be transitioned by those individual years. So if we choose to go pathway two, by 2025, we would require to have 23 of our medium and heavy duty trucks to be zero emission vehicles and so forth up to scale. Until 2035 requires 100%. So you'll see the differences. Pathway one, 100% of our purchases by 2027. And pathway two by 2035 is 100% of all of our vehicles. Requires a different amount of capital investment. Next slide. So this is where we're going to start talking a little bit about money. So we know we have to transition our fleet. It's the right thing to do. Uh, we heard about why. So how are we going to get this done? So the approximate cost, assuming today's cost, because we don't know where inflation. Inflation's kind of gone crazy the last couple of years and prices of cars have also followed that. So using today's vehicle prices, we're looking at an estimated $33 million in order to convert our fleet to zero emission. So that's a substantial amount. If we were to go with pathway one, which is the cheaper of the two options, over the next 10 years, in order to be in compliance, we would require a $10 million investment using today's values. And that'll be a conversion of 100 of our vehicles. To be in compliance with pathway two, if that's the decision of the board, we would require $17 million to be in compliance. And that would be a conversion of 170 vehicles for the timeline of the next 10 years. Next slide.
I'm going to give a brief uh update on infrastructure. We're often asked, when are car chargers coming to the campus near me? And hopefully I can help provide a quick overview of uh that question. Uh, so we're focusing on the infrastructure for the conversion of our white fleet first. So we're currently working with Edison on a program that would pay for roughly 100% of the costs for the infrastructure upgrades, including the chargers, so that we can convert our white fleet, start with our in-house vehicles first. Uh, and then recently, the state has changed its building code standards. So in the future, any new parking lot or any parking lot modified uh will have some type of vehicle chargers as mandated by code. So we are following the current building code, which is the California Building Code. Uh, it's the green initiatives that they've added. So as an example, some of our future buildings, the Welcoming Resource Center, Pacific High School has car chargers because of that recent code change. So as we modernize our schools, as we move from campus to campus, you will see that we will naturally be adding car chargers to our parking lots as mandated by the state.
Excellent. All right, so you seen earlier today, we do have a couple of vehicles that we've already purchased or will be purchasing. So one of them is already branded with San Bernardino logo. Uh, we're very excited about this. So today it goes down in history for San Bernardino district. It's a first acquisition of electric vehicles. So this is fantastic news. You'll see that we also have purchased some Ford Lightnings. Uh, in a previous board, the request was to purchase, make sure our purchase of electric vehicles stayed local. We're as local as we can get. So we're purchasing the Ford Lightning vehicles from San Bernardino's Fairview Ford dealer. And Ford, right now, if you guys are aware of the inventory, it's very difficult with supply chain. Uh, so they actually have a cap of only five vehicles per year per customer. So we did submit our order for five, but we'll continue to keep pushing, pushing those orders and working with the fleets department in order to get as many of the vehicles as possible. In addition to Ford, we're working with Phoenix Motor Cars, they're the ones with the vehicle that was branded with the logo. We're also working with Zevex. Zevex is a very interesting, if you guys hadn't, didn't get a chance to speak with them. Very cool company, very neat niche. They actually transform the vehicles. So they'll take our gasoline and diesel vehicles because there's such a strain on the supply chain for the chassis. They actually take our vehicle, they'll remove the propulsion system and the electrical distribution system and replace it with an electric motor. And we get the truck back. So it's a very good economical way in order to get a new vehicle with new lifespan. We're also working with Rivian as well as Karma. So our next steps, allow the board to digest some of this information regarding pathway one, pathway two. Figure out where we want to move. Provide us some direction as to which way you would like us to move. And then at that point, we'll go ahead and execute that plan. We're already working with SCE on the charge ready program as mentioned. So we already have applications in place to start the infrastructure. That's about 18 to 20 months out. So to keep us from having to wait from SCE, we're actually going to be installing 50 amp service, get our electric vehicles and start purchasing electric trucks now and not wait for that infrastructure to be in place, just so we can keep moving forward. Before I end, I'd like to say thank you to a few folks that are here with us this evening. Synergistic uh executive leadership is here with us. So I want to say thank you to you guys for excellent partnership. Tom Candelario, who is working behind the scenes frantically, working on getting all the vehicles in place, working with purchasing, getting all the electric vehicles. We've gone to conferences, a lot of work put together just to put this presentation and to get those vehicles out there and the first purchase of our electric vehicles. So thank you, Tom. Russell Driver, ARC, so he's working with our EV implementation program as well as our solar implementation program in order to advance our programs past the Net Energy Meeting 3.0, which just came into effect April 15th. So save the district a ton of money. So thank you, uh, Mr. Driver, Tom Pace, who's also been working with them and Aaron Emmons. So thank you, guys, and thank you, board.
All right, Mr. Precy, thank you to you and your team for the presentation. We'll start with questions with Vice President Tillman.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Precy for your presentation. You mentioned a number of 33 million?
Yes, sir. That's assuming based off our 330 vehicles. And we're looking at a blended conversion to zero emission. So some of the transformations of vehicles going from diesel to electric would cost anywhere between $60,000 to $80,000. And the purchase of straight electric new from the factory are coming in at about 180 minus the $60,000 federal credit. So that's netting us about $120,000. So we're looking at a blended rate of about $100,000 per vehicle times those 330 vehicles.
Right now, what are we paying on average for a vehicle?
Right now, depending on the source, like the trucks you saw out there, were $100,000.
What we started.
Oh, for the regular gasoline? That's anywhere, depending on the outfitting, is going to be about $50,000 to $75,000.
So, um, I know this is gold out there, right? And I'm all for electric vehicles. It just seems like we're not there right now. And if you talk about it, you talked about those numbers for the pollution. It's global numbers, right?
Global.
So I don't understand if you buy a. So I don't understand if you buy a vehicle with the engine in it, combustible engine, and then take it out and give it to somebody else to use, how does benefiting the global environment? Because you just bought a combustible engine, but you're not using it, but somebody else is. So what's the difference? I don't, I don't, I don't see what we gain from that. Now, in terms of the mandates and the legislation that's coming down, the question for me is, with all those numbers you listed, are there any consequences associated with it?
No, there's not. Only with SCE, SCE right now does have a clawback as to far as if you've committed to X number of stations and then you don't perform the number of vehicles purchased. Based off that, there could be a clawback on the number of charging stations that are not being utilized by an electric vehicle. They're putting those in place. They're paying 100% installation cost with the assumption that you're going to be purchasing, purchasing the vehicle to go along with it.
And so, you know, I looked at the vehicles today and the cost, which was, I thought, was just enormous. The challenge is going to be, you're not going to always have extra money. So then the question becomes, is the board willing to spend extra money on a program that you don't have to? And you're really not benefiting the environment because you're buying a, a new combustible engine anywhere, let it use somewhere else. So I just hope that we, we, as we go forward, it has to get to a point where it makes sense. I can tell you what's going to happen in the near future. At some point, the funding that we have is not going to be at the same level. And you're looking for every place to cut. And it's not going to make sense to pay an additional $30,000 per vehicle. Because that means you're taking $30,000 away from other areas that could be used in the district, including personnel and teachers and staff. So I don't want to be negative, but right now, the current resources available don't make any, don't make sense financially right now. Now, I'm assuming that you're saying that, and even with the rebates, you're saying that it costs, this costs us $100,000, right?
Yes, anywhere between 100 and 120, depending on outfitting.
Right, which means that's a difference of $50,000. Now, I don't, I haven't factored in the cost for fueling. Maybe we have some cost savings. Have you guys calculated the savings? What's the, what's the savings and cost of fuel?
Well, the district pays about, and I'm going to answer in a, in a different way. But the district pays about $700,000 a year in fuel costs. These, if we were to go with electric vehicles, it's about 80% lower in fuel versus the amount of energy costs that it would in order to charge the vehicle. So you will look at about a $450,000 savings on an annual basis. Just if it was, if it was 100%.
And that's using, plug it into one, a site somewhere.
Yeah, you're paying electricity instead of the fuel.
And, and I'm glad to hear that we're moving forward with doing the solar projects. That was something I know that was instigated from the board. We pushed hard for it. And, and, and my goal is, is to bring as much solar capacity online as possible and build the infrastructure for charging stations. And not, maybe it's going to be a while before we get to a point where you have the trucks. But definitely, it could be an incentive for our employees. If we had charging stations for employees and say, hey, they can use these charging stations for free, that's another tool we can use for recruitment of staff. So I hope we're moving forward on, on, on the solar project because I think that's a good idea. Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Ms. Alexander.
First of all, I want to commend you all for today and just the accomplishments that we have achieved in the sustainability space and the partnerships that we've developed. Definitely appreciated the opportunity to meet some of our partners and learn about what we're looking at in terms of look ahead. Staying on the same lines related to the pathway, or excuse me, pathway one and pathway two, is there a possibility to look at maybe the total cost of ownership? Where you can break down maybe the, the cost of the vehicle, the maintenance, the fuel? And it could be that will drive the narrative in terms of what we decide. Because we might find out if we look at diesel versus electric, the cost might be similar in some respect or another. When you look at TCO and you break it out by way of the types of vehicles that we're looking at in terms of what's in our fleet. So just a thought, it might help because with electric vehicles, the maintenance might not be as much. And then related to the, the EV stations, could you explain a little bit more about what our plan is? And also, are we looking at possibly partnering with the city in those areas where maybe we can do some partnership?
Real quick on the EV chargers. So EV chargers for public use. We are looking, as we modernize, we are required to provide, and there's a calculation depending on how many stalls you have to provide EV chargers. So as an example, Pacific High School, we've worked on the parking lot. We were mandated to add them. And so on the parking lot closest to the football field, you will find chargers there. So as we start to look at our parking lots, you're going to see them in the back of this parking lot. You're going to have eight or nine of them for the new building. We're just going to be gradually adding them, and it's part of the construction cost that we are now factoring in to provide electric vehicle charging stations. As far as partnering with the city, we haven't thought of that. I think we're open to any and all discussion about how we can provide. I think part of the issue with electrification is it's a, it's a collective whole that needs to work on the problem. But it's not, each individual organization has a hand in it. So I, I think that inter-agency cooperation is always welcome. I think it's a great idea to look at where we can mutually help each other in providing the infrastructure required for California to move to electrification.
Right. I think it's worth it, especially when we start thinking and looking at the color of money and where we're pulling the money from. Also, the city did receive recognition and also an award for what we're doing with sustainability. So going back to what Danny mentioned and his inspiration, we're in a great place. We're doing a lot of great things. So maybe that's the way to help offset some of our costs by collaborating and really looking at those opportunities there. And then the last one was in reference to solar. The smaller schools, I guess, where we are not able to build the solar panels, what, what are we looking at? Like specifically, kind of explain a little bit more about the implementation plan.
Edison has a program that we can participate in where if we want to build off-site solar, it has to be within the county. We can find someone who could build off-site solar, so it wouldn't be at the site. It wouldn't be even our property. We can find a developer who's willing to build the solar on our behalf, and we would get the bill credits for the amount of energy that we consume on a daily basis. So by taking those 40 sites and aggregating them, a solar provider could purchase a piece of property within the county, build solar on the property, and we would get the benefit to our bills on a monthly basis. So we would see a reduction as if the solar were ours. Obviously, there's a benefit to the provider for building it. And so we share in the benefit of the cheaper electricity. If you've ever driven to Vegas, as you get close to the Nevada border, you can see that very large solar farm over there. The idea is that, but on a smaller scale. So that's what we're looking at for the sites that are too small to get a provider to come in and try to build on some of our smaller school sites. And it gives us flexibility in the future. The hard part about putting in solar panels is they're going to be there for the next 25 years. It kind of reduces the flexibility if we ever have different plans for the school site.
I would just like to just encourage you all just to think about those partnerships. And lastly, it's like grants. I don't know if we can qualify, but there are grants out there. I've heard a lot about Southern California Edison, but even just going back to California Area Resource Board and thinking about what they might have in terms of opportunities. I think there is like the Carl Moyer grant. Maybe just looking at grant opportunities where we can leverage that cost. And because I know, I'm sure it's not just one board member that's concerned about that. We're all concerned about money. So let's look at just how we can offset and also leverage and partner with the city, the county, seeing where we can make it happen. And then most importantly, just informing the community, because this is a good news story. From what you've shared with me, I think we're leading as it relates to other school districts. So great job.
There are other school districts looking to us and seeing what we're doing. They're waiting to see how we implement and then hopefully copy that platform. But to your point regarding the California Resource Board, we're very familiar with all the different programs. We've already worked with California Resource Board, researching all the different programs from the VW Implementation Plan through the Jeff Bezos Plan. All of those are sponsored through the California Air Resource Board. So we're looking at all those programs and see how we can capture and maximize the number of dollars that are coming back to us. And this way, we don't have a lot of money outlay, and we're leveraging other people's money to implement these plans.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Ms. Marion Grande.
Hello, and it's, thank you, Felicia. I too was thinking of what a terrific story this is and how I feel deeply that it's very important for our own teachers within our own district know what's going on. So my question was, are we working to send this story out to our local newspapers or make your press releases? We need to share this wonderful story here within our own, very own district and within, definitely within our city and county. And then secondly, I think you partly answered this one. So this was my first thought. Was what, but what would need to happen for all of our schools to earn Energy Star certification? I mean, you know, Anderson's a little bitty school. And, and so I think you did mention you would buy solar off. But I would like to see them win something like that. I mean, it's just, it's just, I'm thrilled. I'm really, really excited. This is an excellent presentation. If I can understand it, it's probably good, I think. So, thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Grande. Ms. Sivas.
Well, first of all, I also want to say thank you. Really, really impressed with, you know, some of the information that you've provided here with us tonight. Particularly to learn, you know, that 49 of our schools actually, you know, earned this Energy Star even after the fact that the, they had raised their, what was it? Expectations or qualifications. Thank you. So that's really impressive. So we just, you know, want to say kudos to you guys all as well as, you know, the solar portion of it too. Very just impressed to see how much money we've been able to save and what is projected to, the, the savings that, that you're projecting on that too. So just really good job. And I do have just one question that I guess it wasn't super clear to me as I was hearing Mr. Tillman, you know, share some of his concerns. And, and I must say that I share some of those same concerns as well, because it is a lot of money. The, the piece that I'm not fully understanding is the governor's executive order, right? So what does that mean in terms of the direction that you're asking for us, right? So you presented us with two different pathways. So I guess the question that I'm asking is, do we have to move in a direction? And maybe it doesn't have to be one of those two, but in a direction so that we are able to meet that executive order by 2035?
Well, the state is moving in that direction. There's a lot of conversation regarding moving to zero emission vehicles. And I'll state zero emission and not electric because there's a lot of different technologies other than just all electric. So zero emission is where the future is. What the implementation plan, like for instance, I said the advanced clean fleet ruled by the California Air Resource Board was just passed a few weeks ago. You know, the executive order has been in place for a couple of years. Everyone's still trying to digest to figure out how we're going to be implementing this, which is why even now, they're looking at pushing some of those deadlines back because of realizing that this big push, there's going to be a lot of capital that's going to be required. And how can you expect some of the mom and pop shops or other small businesses, medium-sized organization, public institutions that don't have that profit center to be able to capitalize and put the money back in to some of that capital equipment? So that's a tough ask, and I think the state's recognizing that and pushing some of the deadlines back. Originally, it was a hard steadfast 2035. That's gone to 2045. And with the new California Air Resource Board Advanced Clean Fleet Rule, it's saying 2045 if feasible. So now they're putting in a little bit more questions as to what the implementation plan is going to look like. So that's kind of a difficult question to ask or answer. But what they've put out so far is pathway one or pathway two.
Well, thank you for that, for that response. So if I'm hearing and understanding correctly, then it's, there, as, as Mr. Tillman had asked, there's no penalty associated as we currently stand if that is not met by 2035?
Not that we've seen. I haven't seen a penalty structure come out. Now, there is a sales item. They're going to be restricting it from a sales perspective. But as of right now, there's no penalties that have been listed out. The only one that has actually gone public saying there's going to be a penalty is the clawback provision with SCE and the public utilities.
And now I'm even wondering if we can even start off slower, you know, than, than, than whatever the recommendation is. Because it, this recommendation that you've provided us, it seems, you know, with a goal or the intention to meet certain expectations by certain times. But as, as some of these requirements kind of loosen up a little bit, maybe we can still move in a direction. You know, granted, we look at some of the other, other options and collaborations and so forth. And maybe we're just not as quickly as aggressive. Because another concern that really came up for me was the cost per vehicle. But, but that's on, on current cost. So, so that may increase, you know, in the next couple of years. And we're going to be looking at more than, you know, a, what is it? 30, $30,000 cost per vehicle, right? So yeah, just kind of some things to, to think about. And, and I really appreciate this presentation and the conversation because all of this information is really new to me. So forgive my ignorance. But, but definitely very enriching conversations. And I'm not entirely sure that what we, what we've been presented to with tonight is, like, I'd feel comfortable. I think I'd want more information.
Thank you, Ms. Sivas. Ms. Rosales Medina.
Well, definitely. I wanted to say thank you so much for the presentation as well as the district being recognized as number one in the 2022 Energy Star Certification. And of course, number five in the nation. I think that doesn't, it's never enough that we want to mention. We want to continue to mention that because we are striving. And as we had parents speak earlier, we are, when you go to different places, we are leading in so many different ways. And this is definitely one of those. So I, I, I do support moving forward, which of those two plans best fit the district. Of course, I'm looking at the, the less expensive. But at the same time, it's something that we're going to have to do anyways. And so it's like when, when, I don't remember, I don't know if you remember when the flat screen TV was super expensive when it just came out. And I was like, I'm going to get one one day, but I'm going to wait five years. Because what's going to happen is that the price is going to drop. So I'm seeing this as well as, right now, it's expensive because people are starting to look at it. It will, I honestly feel that it will decrease in price as we move forward. But we don't want to wait until everybody starts purchasing it because now we're in a time crunch. So I do support moving forward with one of those pathways. But I understand the concern of the other board members as well. Oh, and also to recognize that AQMD also, also offers grants as well.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. Ms. Chahusky.
First, also, I want to give my thanks. One of the things that we didn't coordinate that you talked about last time is our work on the green spaces and how that's also going to help and impact in terms of energy efficiency as we plant trees and cool rooms just by proximity of all that kind of stuff. So I did make that tie for me between the two. My question is, is, I know it's zero emission. Are there other alternatives that are actually feasible that we could look to? And how can we implement a plan? I know you gave us two pathways, but I'd like to really see a plan that doesn't have such an immediate impact to our budget and other budget priorities in terms of student learning. You know, this is all important, but it is sort of tangential to our, our main purpose. So I've just kind of wanted to say, what are, what other alternatives are there? Is hydrogen possible? Does natural gas count? Or is that not, no longer the clean, a clean vehicle? Like, I'm not sure. So I just wanted to know what, what other possibilities are out there, you know? And then what that would look like.
Yeah, I think electric is a little bit farther than where, than where hydrogen is. However, that's However, that's, we were testing vehicles or we were at a, a conference back in May where they actually had hydrogen powered semi trucks and boy, do those things move. So, that technology is advancing. Now, where it's at with regard to our medium and heavy duty trucks, I'm not exactly sure. Maybe that's where the future, I know Toyota is banking heavily in hydrogen. They're not even looking at battery. So, we'll have to see where the market's going to move. I mean, it's in its infancy stages. In that ACT conference over in Anaheim that we went to, nation leaders, world leaders moving in this space are still trying to figure out where we're going to be going. You know, it's that, when we're talking about it, it's like the VHS in beta, you know, back in our day, which one was going to make it through the testing, you know, nobody really knew and some people had one of each. So, and I think this is where we're at when it comes to zero emission vehicles. So, is it electric? Is it hydrogen? Is it a combination of both or what type of platform?
And it, so, natural gas is no longer clean? Because I know buses, I mean, that's where they moved. Buses is sort of clean energy. So, I was just kind of wondering where natural gas was in all of this.
Yeah, we haven't really looked at natural gas. I'm not sure if any of you guys have any comments on that. Yeah, we're, yeah, come on up.
Hi, everybody. I, I have some prior experience in public transit sector where they've done a lot of natural gas and even some hydrogen and they're really moving away from natural gas as a way forward because of the recognition of the emissions. And just on hydrogen, if you're talking fuel cell, you need kind of a bigger vehicle for that, just to keep that in mind. They, they do buses and some large trucks with hydrogen, but those fuel cells are very large and expensive. It, it looks like electric battery powered vehicles. For the classes of vehicles we're talking about here are probably, at least in the midterm, what we're going to be talking about.
I'm kind of hopeful. I like the whole byproduct of water and less, less, because I, you know, the other piece of this is what happens when our batteries die? Do we have to have our own, you know, disposal for batteries? I mean, I know you can kind of use them for other things, but that's just a whole nother piece to this is, you know, mountains of batteries somewhere that, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chahuski. Vice President Tillman.
Well, one good thing is when you concerned about 2045, Mr. Ariano said he'll be here until 2045. The, another thing, I have a real concern about, you know, given direction, we say, I heard somebody say we're going to go with one of the pathways. No one up here can tell me that when you list a car as a, buying a zero emission car, that you were talking about the vehicles in the parking lot. No, no one, you can't tell me somebody really thinks that buying a truck new with a combustible engine, has someone take it out and sell that engine to somebody else and then do the paperwork to reduce the price to almost $100,000, a little bit over, is something we want to pursue. So, I don't know, when you say go with the pathway, the vehicles, the vehicles don't exist. You show the picture of the Ford Lightning and you say, we're waiting for it. Because like I said the last time, there's a supply chain issue. So, I just want to make sure when we say we're moving forward in a pathway, number one, we're not going to wait to purchase vehicles and we're not, we're not committing that all the vehicles and trucks that we buy are going to be this conversion truck. I mean, we need to, if we're going to do that, we need to agendaize it. I just can't see us buying new trucks and then sending somebody to do this conversion for all this money. And, and don't minimize the paperwork it takes to get all these rebates. It's not like you just get the rebate when you buy the truck. Who's going to do the work to submit all that paperwork? So, I just have a real concern about when we say we're moving forward with a pathway. I don't know what pathway we're talking about. I don't think we should do any of this right now because the vehicles aren't available. The vehicles that they specify aren't available. You said yourself out there in the parking lot that they don't, the Ford doesn't have an F-250 that's electric. So, to me, that means the industry is not there. And I'm telling you, the, this is not unusual where a state, the state government puts something out there that's unattainable. And, and this is one of those instances, but if we, if we move forward in doing this, you're going to lose money that could be used for our students. I don't see what you get out of doing that because in the end, you're not doing what you're saying is what is important and that's making the environment better. If I'm buying a new engine and put it into circulation, it doesn't matter where I'm starting that engine or somebody else is. I bought it and put it into circulation. So, you're defeating your purpose. I don't get it.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. Ms. Alexander.
I actually wanted to go back to your program overview. You had mentioned some of the, the metrics and just our accomplishments. Do we even know the baseline that maybe we could share? It doesn't have to be in this conversation or if you can just provide us with that overview. Okay, how do we compare to that baseline? Because these percentages, some of, in my mind, some of them are low, but it might not be low if you start, if you give that information.
Sure, yeah, we could add that into a Friday update. We'll show the data from the baseline year and where we're at currently today. And we can also provide you an annual update. So, from year one, year two, all the way up to where we are currently. Now, the number of 38% reduction, it may seem like it's a low, but remember, we've also added 800,000 square feet. So, we went from 4.1 million square feet to 4.9 million square feet and we added heat load in all of our gymnasiums as well, which was 700 tons of cooling capacity. So, even after we've added all that square foot capacity and added all the AC heat load, we still had a reduction of 38% in energy use. So, it actually is quite substantial, even though the numbers may not look like they're fairly large. But we'll, we'll add all that in the Friday update.
Also, the greenhouse gas emissions. I believe you shared it, but I don't see it here. And then I just wanted to touch upon a couple of things. I don't think anybody said, I, I know I didn't say pathway one or pathway two. For clarification, I asked for you to provide total cost of ownership and basically in the world of fleet, you all understand, you're sharing with us exactly what the cost looks like from an allocation standpoint. And then my other question in reference to that, have we considered looking at leasing versus purchasing? Just kind of thinking about the look ahead related to if there is a supply chain issue, just something to consider and to come back with. And then your legislation, going back to legislation, there is also a federal legislation, right?
Well, we're, we're, I'm sure there is. I think you're more of an expert in this field than we are, but there, we're looking at the state requirements. I know there, they do have the, the federal reimbursement program, but we were going off the pathway based off of California Air Resource Board.
Right, but I do agree, we have to be conscientious and responsible about how we go about our acquisition strategy and be mindful of the fact that it might not come to fruition, but strategically, if we don't have a plan, that will put us in a lot more of a precarious situation than having a plan. So, what we decide as a board is one thing, but I think as a fleet operations team, if you could please share with us a little bit more clarity around that, that would be great. Also, the investment, what does it look like from the acquisition strategy? Looking at all the elements, the cost elements.
And I, and I do agree with Ms. Alexander with regards to looking at the whole cost as well. I mean, of course, that's going to be part of what we're going to really analyze of how much we're going to spend. I was mentioning the options because that's something that you were asking for recommendations, which one? So, of course, I would look at the least expensive option. But at the same time, you know, it was mentioned, well, we're going to use, so are all vehicles going to be going under, moving from what engine is now to what they're planning to do? I don't think it's all vehicles. It's probably only a small percentage of them that you would be looking at that.
Yeah, there'd be a small number because, well, I shouldn't say small number. There's, what would you say about four, if we were to do all of them? Right, this is making the assumption that we're moving forward. We have, what, about 40 or 50 of those in our inventory?
2017.
Yeah, 2017. Because there's requirements. In order to qualify for that conversion, you have to be a 2017 model or newer of an F-250.
Okay, and so then with, and then also the other piece was, because you did mention we were purchasing the F-150s. Now, I know that we may have to wait on certain vehicles, but for the F-150s, how many do you, or percentage do you calculate that we need and that we can start off there as well? So, we shouldn't have to, you know, stop and, and wait until we've tried to, you know, we wanted to create a plan, but there's ways to keep moving forward because even with the budget, it's not where we're going to spend all of that money now, next, by, by the end of next year. It's a progression within the year, so you're not going to spend that, all that money at one time. So, I also want to show that and, you know, make others understand, it's not going to be a one-time cost now. It's going to be a progression of cost. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. I don't think there's any more questions or discussions, so my colleagues have definitely covered it all for me. So, thank you, guys. We appreciate it and look forward to the future. All right, we'll move on now. Yep. We'll move on to 8.2, California School Board Dashboard, California School Dashboard Local Indicators Report and Ms. Anna Applegate will lead us in this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Board, the State Board of Education requires the district to report annually on the five local indicators that are on the California School Dashboard. So, we had collaboration between the administration from academic oracle programs, elementary instruction, secondary education, multilingual programs, student wellness and support services, family engagement, human resources and building services, working together to determine our progress on those local indicators. So, I'd like to report on the following indicators as having met for the 2223 school year and that's priority one, basic conditions of learning. Priority two, implementation of the state academic standards. Priority three, parental involvement and family engagement. Priority six, which is school climate and priority seven, which is access to a broad course of study. And you do have the descriptions there in the report of each one of the indicators. Thank you, Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you, Ms. Applegate. All right, any questions or concerns? And help me out, Ms. Applegate, is this a action item or is not?
Yes, it is.
It is an action item, so we would need a motion then to accept.
Is it now? Second.
All right, it's been moved by Vice President Tillman, seconded by Ms. Rosales Medina. Any discussion or questions? All right, here and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. We'll start to my left with Ms. Chahuski. Ms. Sivas? Vice President Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt, aye. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Sandra, you guys are fast. Good job, thank you. All right, motion carries. We will move on to the next one. Great job, team. All right, 9.0, board discussion, 9.1, district sponsorships and the board will discuss procedures and processes regarding requests for district sponsorships. And folks, I think you might have seen a little bit of this already in the past. I know it's been a concern for, I would say, probably most of us, maybe not all of us, but most of us in regards to our sponsorships of programs and events and whatever else you may want to call it. And I do want to thank Mr. Ariano and his team for providing us a brief list, a summary of the last five years of some of the sponsorships that we have, actually, I don't know if we have approved, but have been approved for different functions and events. And I know for me, this has come up a few times where I'd asked for sponsorship or support for a program and was told basically, no. And, and that's fine, but I just wanted us to have kind of establish a criteria or policies, whatever it may be, whatever we may want to call it, to create a greater sense of equity in how we do things. Because I have a hard time saying, how do we give one organization or event, you know, sponsorship and not another? I know you also got a legal opinion that was sent to you as well from ALRR. Again, thank you, Mr. Ariano, for getting that done for us. And basically, you know, if I'm surmising this right, please let me know, Mr. Ariano, if I'm not, that we can provide sponsorship to events or programs as long as there's an educational benefit to the students or I imagine our district as well. So, you know, I know that's kind of a vague description and definition, but it's what was said by our attorneys. So, I guess the next question for myself to the board and to the district is, how do we make that determination? How do we decide on sponsoring or not sponsoring and then how do we determine the amount? Because if you look, there's been, you know, some inconsistencies there for even the same event and then different inconsistencies on per student spending. So, again, that raises my eyebrows saying why some events more, some events less, why, you know, per student more, per student less. I mean, there might be expenditures that go along with that event. I get it. But again, I'm looking for consistency. Ms. Rosales Medina.
Oh, definitely. I agree that we should set a standard. As you can see, there's variance, you know, there's 1,000, 5,000, 30,000. So, there's different ranges that we should really look at and maybe setting a standard by percentages that impact student population, how many students are going to be served through our school district, from our school district with their, by sponsoring their programs. So, I think maybe we can have that, maybe a subcommittee or a, a small group of board members that are interested in moving that conversation with the, with the support of our staff. But definitely look at some of, of the areas that we can better be equitable in a better way to ensure that we are being fair for, for programs that might be also benefiting, but they're not getting, you know, enough or others that are getting too much. I don't know. So, this is some thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. And then when we're done with our, our discussion and conversation, I would also ask if there is even a current BP or AR on this at all. If there's not, then I would recommend it go to the board policy subcommittee if that's what we're looking at. Again, this is discussion. Ms. Alexander.
I also agree that we should make sure that whoever receives sponsorship, that it's affecting or impacting our community. So, it has to be focused on the students, the scholars. Also, within the city of San Bernardino, definitely is critical and most importantly, it needs to be a part of whatever our mission and purpose. And then after we have given them the sponsorship and their event has occurred or whatever it is, ask that they provide us with an impact report validating what the outcome was. So, at least we can see, you know, the outcome. It's one thing for us to report out, but have them share with us exactly the results.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Ms. Mary Ellen Grande.
Well, I, I, I'd like to see, I like the idea of a subcommittee because I would like to see, we have so many organizations and yet there is a few, I see the same ones every year. So, I would like to have that rotate, say, you know, no more than twice in say, a five year period, once or twice, but it's like now, once they received it, once they, it's just automatic almost. And there's a lot of really worthy organizations. How do you decide? How, you know, how do you say the criteria? It doesn't sound like a lot, $100 a student, but then when you have 300 students, that's, you know, $30,000 is a big chunk. And then with other organizations, we give 1,000. So, I, I don't know. Where, where is it, you know, where are we affecting the most students that are from our district? So, that, that's all I just question.
Thank you, Ms. Grande. Ms. Chahuski.
Thank you. My first, I'm, okay, so I call it an issue, is the definition of sponsorship because I know there's things that we've given money to that aren't on this list, but, but, and then some of these things are like sponsorships for like an event and then some of these things are actually things that we've sent students to, which is sort of different. We're sponsoring students to attend something which is more like a field trip than like a sponsorship. So, as I went through the list, I had, it was problematic because you can't even compare the dollars because it's very different if we're sending, if it's the cost to send students to an event versus we're supporting a community group that supports our students, right? So, I think there's probably other things that fit or that, or, you know, could fit, but it, for whatever reason, didn't use that word, even though we're sponsoring. And then should something where we're actually sending students to a camp be called a sponsorship? I mean, that, because there's something on here, one of the largest items on here was us actually sending students to, to an event, which to me is a field trip, not a sponsorship. I, I do think we need a, I think it's more of a policy and procedure. I don't, I don't think we need to necessarily go, well, we're going to sponsor this one and we can only do it this many times, but what is our criteria? And I go back to something that Ms. Alexander has now said a couple of times about community. Like, I think what we do should be impacting the, this, the, you know, the city of Highland, the city of San Bernardino, the county of San Bernardino, because those are the, those are the places where our students attend and live. And, and then our, our partner, you know, the cities and then our, the higher education, you know, those things that really impact and work with us as we're trying to rebuild all those systems that we've had over the years. that we've had over years, you know, like P-16 or I don't think they're going to call it something else now, but, you know, those types of things. So, so I do believe, and if that's the policy Subcommittee, I think it's probably the appropriate place to develop policy or procedure that we do that. I think there's, you know, I brought this in part because I'd like us to see us sponsor the lead program. You know, it's in September, so this is really time-sensitive in terms of deciding whether we are going to do that outside of this. It's also very much on school safety and gun violence. And, you know, there's, there are folks from, from, I believe, Robert Rodriguez, who is one of our teachers who's on leave right now with NEA, but he's going to be one of our speaker, the speakers there on the panel on gun violence. So, I just think, I think we really need to think about those types of things and, you know, what is that direct impact and what is that community partnership? And sometimes, the benefit is, the cost benefit is, they're going to, like, they're a good community partner that's going to be helping support us and support our students down the line. So, I think we have to think about that in terms of procedure. So, those are my two things, as I brought that up because I really would like to see us do something for them. I don't know when that appropriate time is because I did ask it to be agendized and it came in in board discussion, so I don't know if we can take action. You know, even though I had asked for it to be agendized at the last meeting for action.
Actually, I think under the way it is right now, we could, so. But I'll go, keep moving on. Vice President Tillman.
Ms. Chahusky is very good. We have a concern and she added her item. But, um. But let me say, I think you guys have a process in place. It might be a process that you're uncomfortable with, but you have the process in place already. Every one of these items appears on the agenda. You get to vote on it. It may be in consent. Yeah, it does. We can't, we can't spend money unless it's agendized. And it'll be in consent. There's items tonight. You can pull the item. The only thing unique about this, and you're right, they don't have like, I don't know why, like, the the Future Leaders Program is not on here. We've done that for years and years. The one with Tomas. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Future Leaders. And it's a great program. There's a bunch of programs that aren't on here. I don't know how they picked the ones that are on here. It's almost like somebody said, I don't like these. But, uh, but we have a process. And like you said, you asked tonight, you're looking for consensus. If she has the consensus, it'll be agendized. If the board votes on it, then the money goes there. I think the legal clarification we got from the superintendent was great. They said it has to impact our students in a positive way. And it has to be feasible and not way too much money. You know, so I think you have a process in place already. If, I mean, one of these is paying for not just students, but you're paying for students and teachers, and other folks on this, the one that we've been doing a long time for the Underground Railroad. So, but that's always agendized also. And the amounts vary. What drives it is whether you have the money or not. The only thing unique about this time is we've been in a weird historical period where schools have gotten a lot of money for the last, how many years, Mohammed? And we haven't seen the downturn. When you see the downturn, we're going to, we're going to reduce the amount of money we're giving to these programs. Because you're not going to have the money and you have to use that money to focus on basic stuff. Trust me, if you ever get to a point, and you will, we have to send out layoff notices, then it's easy to say, we're not going to spend money on this kind of stuff because we have to focus on the meat and potatoes. So, I think you have a process in place already.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Ms. Rosales Medina.
With that said, I would move with consensus to support in pushing that we do add the lead conference into this, into the agenda, so that way we don't have to wait. So, I would move for consensus on that, so we can have that on the agenda. Because it is something that we've always, we've supported in the past. And it's going to be directly helping with these conversations as Ms. Chahusky mentioned, so. There was something else I was going to mention, but I totally blanked out on that one. So, I'll just let the other board members.
We were side barring, so maybe that's our fault.
That's okay. No, that's okay.
That's why I'm starting to write mine down before I get to you. And I'm going live, so don't forget.
You're, you're fine.
Ms. Siviles.
So, for me, I think I would also like more information and clarification in terms of what qualifies a sponsorship. Because I know that, like, in the past, there's like events and galas and things like that, right? So, are we making a differentiation between those type of events? You know, purchasing a table, purchasing seats versus, you know, like Ms. Chahusky was saying, where it's more of a, like, field trip type of event? I think I would personally, I think we do have a process, which is the board process. But I think that we, just for the sake of, you know, being a little bit more equitable across the board, I think that we should have some sort of guidelines at the very minimum that we kind of look at, look toward. I heard a couple of things as you all were speaking on, you know, limiting sponsorships for a given organization within a year. I don't know if that's something that the board would want to, you know, do, but it definitely warrants a discussion. You know, what are the pros and cons of doing something like that? Again, separating the definition between what is, what constitutes a sponsorship versus what constitutes, you know, something else. You know, having those partners report back to us, what are they doing with that money? What is the impact that's having on their organization? And what impact, what benefit are we getting also from, from, from the investment that we're putting in? Should we limit a certain amount, you know, per sponsorship? Should we not exceed a certain amount of money? I think all of those points and conversations, I think that we could weed them out a little bit more to create a little bit more equity around some of these practices. So, I would support that. I would support sending it maybe to a sub-policy committee like Dr. Wyatt had mentioned. But for tonight's purposes, I do also support, you know, agendizing this, this, because we've done it in the past. And this is something that Ms. Chahusky has brought up. And I think that while we get this up and running, I would support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Siviles. Ms. Chahusky.
Can I ask again? Because my, the consent I got last time was to put it on the agenda because I wanted to take action on it. So, is it okay for us to take action on it tonight? Because the consent that I asked for it to be agendized so that I could get the sponsorship this time. It is specifically listed, although I understand that it's board discussion. So, I just want to make sure that we are appropriate. If I were, I'm asking the question before I make a motion.
And thank you, Ms. Chahusky. I probably have to defer to Mr. Islam on that or Mr. Ariano, or even Karen. They're pointing to Karen now, so. Or Ms. Cunningham. Karen, I hope you're ready for that. But, because I would think it has to be in consent, right? Or can we do that as an item right now?
Yeah, I'm honestly not sure if you can just add it like that. I was under the impression it was to be agendized to discuss and put onto the next agenda. So, we couldn't put it onto July's agenda?
I do apologize. There were two totally separate, actually, items. One was to discuss just the practice and this other was to actually agendize lead for approval. So, maybe that was just, you know, missed in our conversation review and I'll take credit for that as well, so.
We can add it for the next agenda, having lead.
That'll be in time, right?
Okay.
That's still being timed. It's not until, right.
Stuff? I mean, that's, July is late for a sponsor.
Maybe a wink, wink, all right?
So, I don't know how. I know sometimes we've ratified sponsorship. I don't know what to do with this point.
I mean, we've done ratifications. I, I just assumed it was to go on to the July one, so I misunderstood that. I thought that was going to go on if there was, gave consensus. And we still, you still haven't decided on an amount, on how much.
I was going to make a motion, but I didn't want to make a motion without, I was, you know, we did, we did 5,000 in 2020. I think that's an appropriate amount, especially given the impact of that convert, of the theme of it and what we've experienced in our district. You know, I, I think there's a direct tie since we've experienced gun violence. But that's what I was going to ask for is, is to match the 2020 amount of $5,000, which is the last time they held it and that we participated.
Well, I would assume if you guys gave consensus to approve that, that we would just, you know, put it onto our agenda as a thing that, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we would have, we'd have to ratify, but I'm a lot more comfortable with it being probably agendized on a consent. But if we are allowed, I mean, we've talked about this enough already for lead, and I think we're all in agreement with it. But I always want to make sure that, you know, we do things appropriately. No, that's what I'm saying.
It is on there. It is on the discussion, it is specifically on the, as a discussion item because I asked for it. But I, I didn't underst, but it wasn't as action, so.
I would recommend we agendize it for the next board meeting and then have that approval. Sorry, Mickey. But thank you.
My intent is to engendize it for $5,000. So, everybody is clear. That's what I want, action on $5,000 for lead.
Just like we did the last year for 5,000.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's what we did, but we'll check. Was it? Okay. All right, Ms. Alexander.
Oh, I recommend going back to the whole special committee idea. If we could just put in some type of grid, who are all the sponsors we've had, organizations that we have sponsored. This is great information. Thank you for putting the time and energy and putting this together. I really appreciate it.
It's a good start.
But I guess standardizing it will probably help us. My version of the process isn't what was communicated. I think we just need to have a little bit more specifics around who can apply what we're doing. I support everybody that's on here. That part I don't have a problem with. I just feel like we need to just standardize the process.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Ms. Rosales Medina.
Well, I was actually going to say we could just have a consensus and move with the ratification. But if that's, that's fine. We can have it at the next agenda. But yes, definitely move forward with maybe having that discussion earlier than later with the Subcommittee, Policy Subcommittee.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. And I've been pretty patient because I know I was the one that kind of pushed this as well for this conversation. And, you know, one thing I wanted you to notice also on the sponsorship list, the one that we do have in front of us on the items, is also the account and budget code numbers that are used. So, there's different ways that it can be funded and, you know, different ways it can be prioritized and actually approved as well. So, I think that's important that we know that. You know, my biggest, I guess, hope here and want is for transparency and consistency. I think we've heard that enough already with all of us here, and there seems to be consensus on that. And then, my question, now, this is one of my questions for, for staff is, you know, how did we differentiate how one gets sponsorship, one gets a table, or one gets tickets? Because it seems like the ones that we had tables and tickets for, and Vice President Tillman was, you know, side barring with me and he said, Scott, we just went to an event last week. And I said, yep, we sure did, but it's not on the list. So, again, why would that not be on the list? And I know that might be a heck of a lot of work because we go to a lot of events. So, I do apologize to staff for that. But just, maybe not the whole list, but, you know, why some make the list and why some don't? That would probably be a heck of a lot easier, so. Yes. Ms. Cunningham.
The only reason they're not on this list is because they don't go to board. Those like that, when we get a table, we just do the paperwork for it. So, I didn't have a list of all those.
Cabinet-level decision, right?
Yes, yes.
And see, that's another practice that's happening that, you know, obviously, the board doesn't approve and it doesn't come to us for approval. So, for transparency reasons, I think it needs to come to the board and the board has to see it. And then, my last thing, I'll just say, because I see another light coming on, is in agreement with Ms. Alexander and others, I think a simple matrix would not be that hard to develop in regards to maybe type of event, student involved, board involved, cabinet and board involved. That's, to me, that's not that hard to develop. We have an outstanding and excellent team that can do that. And we have definitely capacity and the number of folks that could get that done. All right, Vice President Tillman.
I don't mean to complicate things, but you did also get correspondents detailing the amount of money each board member has to expend. So, if each board member decided to buy a ticket at an event for $250, you could say that is a sponsorship. But that's not something that comes to be voted on. But if you say seven times 250, you're talking about over $1,000 that would show up as a sponsorship. But even if you guys pass whatever new policy you're going to pass, it's going to bypass it. Because you have policy that says board members have X amount of dollars to expend for these type of events. The one that Dr. Wyatt's talking about the other night would have been spent out of our board expenditure which has nothing to do with being approved. The only time, and a lot of this stuff came about when we went through COVID. So, there wasn't a event where you bought a ticket, but they were still giving scholarships to our students and they asked us for sponsorship. So, I really do believe we have a lot of this in place. And two, it depends on whether a board member champion's it. And then, it has to make sense in terms of cost. You're right. The highest one on here is $110,000. And the only reason why we approve it is because we know it includes 10 days. It's a 10-day event with airfare, food, lodging. And we think the event that they do and the program they put on gives value to the district. That's why we approve it. That's not going to change if you guys have your policy meeting. So, I just don't know where you're going with the policy meeting. It's, you're right, it's not consistent. It's, you're right, it's not consistent. It's never gonna be. I don't know anything about lead, but Mr. Husky says it's a great program. It's not that much money, so when I see no consent, I'll vote for it. If somebody else happens to get one on consent that I don't think is appropriate, we'll vote it down. I've seen that happen. We have a process in place.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman, and I won't turn my light on again, and I, I will disagree with you on that one because there's tremendous inconsistency, period, in my opinion, and there needs to be more. And you're right, board members want to champion something, great. But I, I've seen a lot of inconsistencies, so that's where I stand on this. Thank you. Yes, sir. Turn on your light, though, please. No, I'm just kidding. We'll, we'll teach you that one.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, I appreciate the rich and robust conversation. I know this has been a topic that has been bounced around the last couple of months. So just to be clear, there was a lot of conversation today, a lot of suggestions, a lot of great ideas. Just looking for what direction you'd like to give superintendent staff?
I'll, I'll have to look at my colleagues and make sure I capture this correctly. One, I think we're obviously setting up a, a meeting for a board policy subcommittee, number one. Correct? And then, you know, obviously from there, I think a product will come out of that. Maybe it might be a matrix, could be a revised board policy with some direction. And does that sound about right, or am I missing anything? I want to make sure that Mr. Ariano has a clear direction from us.
Clarifying question.
Yes, sir, of course.
Not knowing how the subcommittees are selected or how big, what are the specifics? Who's gonna be on that subcommittee?
We, we already have a predetermined board policy subcommittee. I will say this to my colleagues, though, that we need to make these meetings, you know, when they're set up. I know we have them last week and some folks were on about 10, and we did go on with two. I would ask kindly that if we have at least two members there that we carry on with the meeting, because business gets, you know, gets stalled when we don't show up on our end. So that would be my ask to all of you. All right, thank you, Superintendent Ariano. All right, let's keep moving. We're doing pretty good, actually, on, oh, wait. Oh, that, I'm sure we'll capture that at the end of the meeting. You, you listen for that, Mr. Husky. It'll be there, I'm sure. Oh, and I, ew, I think the superintendent's gonna get to that when he gets to his comments, whatever the little blank card he gave us was down there. Board Policy 5145.13, response to immigration enforcement. You were given a policy there to take a look at revisions are read that are mandatory and language has been reviewed and approved by California Department of Education for the purpose of clearing the federal program monitoring review findings. And this does have a be it resolved, so I believe this is an action item. Is that correct? Because this is a mandated revision? This is 10.1, yes, sir? Do we have any discussion? Well, we have to have a motion and a second.
So move.
Move my Mr. Husky. Who was it seconded by? Oh, seconded by Ms. Sivios. Thank you, Ms. Sivios. Ms. Rosales Medina?
I just wanted to say, I wanted, first of all, appreciate the, the cabinet members for sharing the information, because I just want to make sure that our families know that we are always here to ensure safe, a safe and secure learning environment and as well as for our parents, so that there's no fear. So I, I just appreciate the update because that helped clarify some of the concerns I do have. I wish there was a way we can kind of like tighten the language even better, but I think moving forward, I, I would support it. So I just want to just say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. Anyone else? All right. I believe we had a motion and a second, so there is no further discussion or comments or questions. We'll go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. Let's continue to move on. 11.0, reports and comments. 11.1, board members. And we'll be starting to my left with Ms. Sivios, and then going over to Ms. Chuhuski and back around to Ms. Alexander.
Did you do 10.2?
Oh, shoot, my apologies. 10.2, board policy 5111, admissions. Thank you for catching that, folks. I'm moving a little too fast. All right. Revisions are read, are mandatory, and the language has been reviewed and approved by California Department of Education for the purpose of clearing the federal program monitoring review, FPRM, MR. And again, this will be open to a motion, a second, and then discussion.
Second.
There's a motion by Vice President Tillman, seconded by Ms. Sivios. Any discussion on this policy? All right, hearing and seeing none. Let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. Now we'll move on to 11.0, reports and comments. 11.1, board members, starting to my left with Ms. Sivios.
Just really quickly, I want to say happy Father's Day. Hopefully, everybody had a really good weekend and happy holiday, Juneteenth holiday as well. And then I'm just circling back. I, I want to say thank you to Dr. Rodriguez for providing all that information that I'd been asking for at the last couple of board meetings regarding the Swiss Department and how they're supporting. And, you know, you sent me quite a bit of information, so I've been reviewing it. I'm sure I'll have more questions. But thank you so much for that. And I also want to circle back to a request about special education. I, unless I've missed it, but I haven't seen it on the Friday updates regarding the waitlist for the ECAT. And the reason, or the re- the question that I had was what, I think we had a waitlist prior to COVID, and I think we still have a waitlist for the ECAT evaluations. And I want to see, the question that I had, what was, what was the progress that had been made on that waitlist? And why do we continue to have a waitlist? And when will we get caught up? So if we can, if you can provide that information, I'd really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sivios. Ms. Chuhuski?
Everyone, I also hope you, all the fathers here had a wonderful Father's Day. And that peaceful and good celebration yesterday of Juneteenth. It's remarkable that we finally have that as a holiday. I was able to attend the Law Enforcement of the Year awards, and congratulations to our Matthew Montero. He was our San Bernardino City Unified Police Officer of the Year. I also attended the San Bernardino Police Activities Lead, League Lead Program. We had a number of students that were there and graduated. And thank you, Danny Martinez, for being one of the chaperones this year and helping out with the program. And a big thank you to Officer Arisale Madha and Sergeant Chris Gray, who organized and ran the program and have now done so for several years. And our kids have really benefited from the opportunities. This year, they were also able, they went to the Museum of Tolerance. They did the high ropes course at Cal State. They, they learned teamwork through, working through escape rooms. ThinkWise did a financial presentation with them, and then they, they do a lot of other leadership activities. They have to apply and write an essay to be a part of this program. So I was, I'm really excited that we've been able to continue to do that. Just a reminder that on July 11th, the seven student board members that we requested that we have for next year will be sworn in. So there is a reception proceeding. I'm gonna ask again about the agenda and how we are going to accommodate these student board members who have rights under ed code and board policy to attend and participate in meetings and activities. And I don't know that we've actually talked about or seen, but July 11th will be their first meeting. So just kind of put a little, little, light a little fire on that issue. And then also a reminder that we have a joint board retreat with them on July 28th. It is during the day, but that was one of the items that we, before, as they get started, that we wanted to sit with them. We will meet with them on the 27th to go through some expectations, leadership skills, and things like that to prepare them. And then we're meeting and we will be getting back with you. But if you have anything that you think we, you would like to talk with them during our retreat, but just make sure you put that on your calendar. I think we said 10 to 3, 9 to 3? I don't, for, on the, on the 28th. But I will, I'll email that just to make sure. I, I forgot to double check that with Mr. Martin, Ken Martinez, is sort of our lead on staff on this, with, with Ms. Cunningham. So I will check with him and just to double check. But yeah, we, I gave you this a while back to the days, but it's, it's July 28th. It's the Friday before school starts. So they're all back from, ready to go to school, and, and so it was a good date for that. So just a reminder, because these are the seven kids you guys asked for. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chuhuski. Ms. Alexander?
I'd like to also reiterate happy belated Father's Day. I did send my messages to you all. I hope you had a great Father's Day, all the fathers here and all the men in your lives that are fathers. And Juneteenth was yesterday. It was a great celebration. I had the opportunity to attend a couple of events. Went to one at Valley College, which was awesome. It was their second year doing it. Had a lot of people, a lot of vendors, a lot of people in the community. It was a community-wide event. And then we also attended another one at Cal State, and that was in the daytime yesterday. And definitely they had additional community members that had attended vendors. And most importantly, it was a day of celebration for a very important day and one that should not be forgotten. So I was happy to be able to participate. Attended United Way's annual meeting. As you all know, Dr. Gwen Daly Rogers is the CEO, so was out there supporting her. Mary Ellen was there as well. And it was a nice event, just to be a part of it. And most importantly, Dr. Sandra Rodriguez was installed as one of the newer board members. So congratulations. And then attended the San Bernardino Chamber Law Enforcement Day. And again, congratulations to Officer Montero. Really great acknowledgement. It was a great event. I mean, all the officers and law enforcement officers that received their acknowledgement is really nice. And for them to do that, I guess it was like 46 or 45 year, how many years was it?
Oh, 45, 45.
Yeah, 45. That was impressive. So, yeah. I did receive a phone call regarding Sturgis. I know that Powell had their graduation there. However, they were also not happy with the fact that, I guess, Sturgis is not in the best of conditions. And not too sure, I mean, we own the building, from my understanding, but do we have a plan to improve the building, do something about it? Because apparently, one, it wasn't prepared for graduation, didn't really represent us well. But two, we're putting investments into other buildings that we own. So this would be one that I think that if it's not a part of our priorities, we need to make it a priority. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Yes, I do want to say happy, happy belated Father's Day, as well as happy Juneteenth. And with Juneteenth in mind, I, I know there was a lot of people that just didn't understand, you know, what it, what the, what, how, what the significance was. I know I had created a video two years ago, so I would use that as a reference. But I, I want to know how moving forward, now that we know this is a national, I know I've been, I was really excited once we found out that it was gonna be a national holiday, how we can, you know, the next school year or next, next year, to make sure that we have information out there for parents to understand what Juneteenth is about, our students to understand what Juneteenth is about. That way, we can better educate them how, what, what a significant moment this was in, in ensuring freedom for everyone, especially those who were enslaved. So I do want to do better education on the Juneteenth, so those individuals will know the importance of this, of the, of the day. But are not taking this out of context where it's just, let's just buy food and this is what we're gonna celebrate. But the reality is, it's, it's a historical moment in time. So we need to, so that would be one of my things, is to try to make sure that we're preparing our families and students, even staff members, to understand the significance of Juneteenth. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. Ms. Marion Grande?
Thank you. And I, too, say happy Father's Day to everyone who works in that, in that particular space or job, because there's a lot of people that take on those duties. Stepfathers, guardians, aunts, uncles, mothers. My mother was my father. But I just, I wanted to go back, last meeting, it was, there were so many things to discuss, and I was so caught up. But I did want to mention this, to thank you to everyone who supported me for the Headdress Ball. And I just, it was, I think, a life highlight in mine. It was something I had dreamed about for about 20 years. And, and so, and my daughters knew this, so it was particularly gratifying to have them all there and watching me. And I am just thrilled to see how many people I inspired to join the Headdress Ball. And I'm getting a lot of kudos from the Assistance League, and it was, that was better than, than being on stage. And it was just so gratifying. And hats off to Dr. Rodriguez and Dr. Applegate. They made me look so great. They, they've got, single-handedly, how many members, how many people signed up so far? Two, three people?
We had six and 10 more are in the pike.
And so with Felicia, the new president, you know, we're just like power, powerful, very powerful. Oh, my God, it's gonna be great. And I also had other people come up to me who had never met me in person, but who are Facebook friends who wanna, are interested in joining. So the Assistance League is going to really sparkle this next year. Watch our, watch our smoke. And let's see. And secondly, I did want to mention that I attended the Ballington Charter Academy, their art show. I think Mickey, too, was there. We missed each other. Oh, I didn't get any of the barbecue, but I took down their name and got their card. It smelled wonderful. And if you ever get a chance to go and visit, oh, my goodness, I, I just can't imagine going to a school like that where their focus is on art at such a young age, for elementary. And they're just very inspired. They're also learning STEAM activities through art. So it, it's just really, really great. And, and then on another kind of a sad note for me personally, is I got a text, and then I think I went down and talked to some teachers at Anderson School. As you all know, that's near and dear to my heart. I worked there 20 years. And, and they didn't, they didn't feel they got any technology, and no teacher's got a big white screen TV that's smart, that does stuff. And no one was offered a new laptop. And also, they're, they're upset that their kids, with their special needs and all, to go to work, they still are just given a bus pass. There's no vans. And where they, they hear of other teachers in the school, in the school district with the same kind of students and going to work, they get, they say, why do they have two vans and we have none? And it makes, it breaks my heart. So I don't know the truth of it. The truth of it could be, maybe the, they asked the head of the school, and they said, no, we don't need those this year. We don't know. There's always another story. It's perception, but perception will rise to level reality. That's what Ray Colberston taught me. Perception will rise, always rise to level reality. So I don't know who I would ask to, to look into that, to see if there's something more we can do, at least to let them know that they're important still. And I still get that, you know, no one listens to us. And I told them, that's not true. You've got all of us. You have all seven board members. We are here. And so I want to promote that we are here kind of thing. It's really hard for me not to make a noise or give a look to, to audiences who are speaking out, and I understand so well. Because like I said, I, I was a teacher. So I, my heart hurts because I know that's how they feel. And it may or may not be true. I, I no longer just think one way or the other. I've learned. We do a lot. And so I'm very happy about, about our, our group. Thank you all. That's it.
Thank you, Marion. Vice President Tillman?
Yeah, I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but I, I will just say to my fellow board members, when I have issues like that, I call the superintendent. And because that, we are the eyes and ears of the district, and we can get the quickest response to help people. I think as board members, you have to realize the, the role we play and the, the power that we have. And it's powerful to be able to call the superintendent and say, there's a site that says they're not getting equipment. Can you ensure that they do? Because the superintendent has made the commitment that all employees will get a new device. So it just be, to me, you make the phone call, he reassures you, he follows up, and you can close the loop back with those folks that questioned you. Then, of course, you're gonna follow up to make sure that Mr. Ariano has done it. And, and, and I'm sure it will, because I fully trust Mr. Ariano. So I just want to say, I just encourage all board members to, when you're out there and receiving information, to make those phone calls. I do it all the time, and it benefits the district greatly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. And I'll keep my comments brief. My colleagues have said a lot about some of the events. I was at as well, and great events, and definitely congratulations to our staff that were recognized. I was very fortunate to be on a panel for the Ethnic Studies Institute, and I thought that was pretty amazing. Just wanted to give Dr. Greer and his team a huge shout out for all the work that they did there, as well as some of my colleagues from county schools. You know, huge step in the right direction. And I, I like that Samyel City has taken a lead on that, along with county schools, on really developing the curriculum for ethnic studies. And I think it's long overdue. It's something that I've always been excited about and supported. So great job to everyone involved in that. And then, oop, my screen just went off. Just want to thank the chief, Chief Polino, and his officers, his team, who worked our Samyel County Superior Schools graduation ceremony, who kept the peace for us. You know, it's always a challenging event for us. We bring folks from all over the county in all different walks of life and backgrounds. And yeah, it could be interesting. But great job on supporting us there, and great job for officers as well. And that is it for me. Thank you. Oh, and I see Ms. Marion Grande has her light on.
I'm sorry, I just have one more little tiny thing.
Yeah, 32 seconds.
Okay. The new building, the, behind the BOE, is it too late to make sure the blueprints include private offices for staff, students, and others who handle those highly sensitive issues such as Rebecca Harper mentioned? That's all. The end.
You made it. Fantastic.
Ditto.
Great job. All right, let's move on to 11.2, superintendent and staff. Mr. Ariano?
Thank you, President Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, distinguished members of the board, and distinguished members of our community. First of all, just let me start by thanking Sam and his staff for an outstanding presentation today, and just giving us a, a little bit of light of where we're going, where we could be going. And I appreciate the board, as I've said every, every time we're together, questions make us better. So I really appreciate that all of you are engaged in the conversations, not only asking questions, but even providing suggestions. So thank you. Keep doing that. Makes us all better. Second of all, I want to reassure everybody on the board that the technology refresh does include Anderson, as well as the furniture refresh that we're doing. So they are included, so I'll make sure that they're aware of that. But also, maybe you can circle back as well with the staff there. So today, I want to just take a few moments to share with you where we are going as a staff in the next couple of weeks. We're preparing for our management conference. And you see up there, the title of our management conference this year is People, Purpose, and Passion: Pathway to Excellence. And you'll notice right below it as well, Ain't No Stoppin' Us Now. Now, the reason I put that on there is, if you remember on the meet and greet, the very first song that Soul Point played in my meet and greet was Ain't No Stoppin' Us Now. And I, I never, everything is fate to me. I don't believe in coincidences. So I thought, you know, they are showing me the path, that Ain't No Stoppin' Us Now. And as you know, as part of the lyrics of the song, there's one part that says, we're gonna put ourselves together, and we're gonna polish up our act. And, you know, I'm committed to making sure that we're healing as a district, moving forward, and that we are united. So we're preparing for that management conference, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about that here in, in a few seconds. Next slide, please. You know, I'm gonna walk out singing, strolling, too, you know, strutting. I, I want to share with the board that I had the opportunity with the board that I had the opportunity to participate in all three days of the, what's known as the ALI. It's basically the principals training for three days. And, you know, I want to commend Anna and her staff, who put on just three remarkable days of presentations and trainings for our principals. And I also want to thank Sandra and Marcus for your contributions to those three days. You had some folks do some presentations that were just awesome. We talked about universal design for learning. We talked about instructional frameworks. We talked about the importance of the ELL training based on the DOJ directives. We talked about our initiatives with our African-American student achievement, our evaluation of instruction. We even had some time to tell our story. So thank you, Anna, for a great three days. Sandra, Marcus, for your contributions. Part of that conversation I had was to be able to address the principals and really have them to understand what I expect. So I wanted to share with the board something that I call superintendent objectives for principals. And this is something that I've had not only in my previous district, but I carry forward with us. But before I started with the objectives, I told the principals very clearly that the district office is here to support school sites, not the other way around. So we're creating that culture that we're here to support the student achievement of schools, making sure our teachers, our support staff, and our principals have what they need to be successful in meeting the goals and objectives that we put forth. So I really appreciated everybody's support and head nodding that we are here to exist, to support the schools. But to also be careful that we're not here to add more work on principals, we're here to add more support. And so many times when we add support at the district office, we create bureaucracy that sometimes is unintentional and at times unnecessary. And so I appreciate Sandra, Marcus, Anna. We had a very deep discussion, Mohammed, of making sure that we go back and look at our systems and make sure that things that we have in place are indeed intended to be more support and not more work. But let me just share with you some of the nine objectives that I shared with our principals. The first three you see there are just making sure that our first objective is being learning leaders in the instruction of our students. So we're talking about early literacy, numeracy, ELL students, our African-American Student Achievement Initiative, just to name a few, to make sure that we're focused on our student engagement and student discipline policies, that we're focused on our restorative practices, because we've made a commitment for that. We're very conscientious about other means of correction. And then making sure that we're using our counselors and our systems for wellness appropriately with our kids at the campus. So I also talked about school safety, making sure that our protocols and systems are calibrated, that they're work well communicated, that we are training our folks to make sure that they're current with all the relevant training and research. And then more importantly, that our staff, our administrative teams are visible before school, after school, during passing periods, so that kids know that we're there. Next slide. Then we talked about making sure that our campuses are clean and attractive. So I had the opportunity to meet with Mayor Tran this week, and we're going to be meeting monthly. And one of the shared visions that I had were there is making sure that as we are part of this renaissance of San Bernardino, that we're making sure that we have common language, common expectations, common vision wherever we can. And one of the things that is important is making sure that people see San Bernardino, not only Samaria City, but Samaria City Schools, as somewhere that is attractive and that we take great pride in what our city and schools look like. So that is the expectation I have as principals, is making sure that all of our schools are the jewels of the community. And so we'll be talking a little more about objectives and specific goals that I have for our MNO and our principals on that. More importantly also is the importance of developing our assistant principals, our future principals, the principals for the kids who are not even born yet. So we're going to be working together as a cabinet to make sure that our systems and protocols are in place and make sure that our assistant principals are not just handed checklist of things to do, but that we are truly building their capacity to become principals in the future. The other part we talked about is just communication and school marketing, making sure that our schools are communicating with our parents often, when necessary, that we're honest, that we're transparent, but also that we are celebrating not only accomplishments, but the day-to-day work that our staff and students do each day. So we're going to be working closely with Linda and Communications Department, not only putting together a marketing plan for the district, but supporting every school to making sure that they're promoting their schools weekly on social media about what the kids are doing, not only special things, but just the day-to-day stuff that's really cool in the Samaria City Unified School District. Next slide. Then the last three objectives are, first of all, meeting all timelines. That's important. If we're going to run an efficient system, if we're going to run an organization of such complexity, we have to really focus in on the simplicity of things. And meeting timelines is something that helps run the efficiency of the district. So that was something I was very clear about. Really, our focus on innovation and technology. We're going to be spending a lot of time in the next few years talking about development of STEAM across all schools, digital storytelling, innovation, maker space, different types of technology, such as hologram technology, whether it be artificial intelligence, et cetera. And then one thing that I really talked about to principals, school budgets. And I know, I've heard Danny say this for years from afar in other districts, which I completely support. We need to make sure that this year's money is for this year's students. And when we say this year's money for this year's students, it's making sure that principals are planning their budgets in advance so that when we order materials and materials come in a timely fashion in the given year, so it has impact to the kids. Now, I've told principals that I believe in autonomy with accountability, but that the space between autonomy and accountability is where the district office comes in to provide support. So we're going to make sure that our principals have the support and information they need to make sure that they are spending this year's money on this year's students. Next slide. Then I was very clear with the principals that, yes, they have a new superintendent. Yes, they have new board members in place. But that doesn't mean that they should be waiting around for us to put together our long-term goals. We were very clear that our administrators in charge did an excellent job holding down the fort the last year and a half. And as part of that, they moved forward the work that Dr. Markson and Mr. Irvin had put forth with, with the previous boards on something called the SBCSD Framework for Excellence Vision 2025. So I reiterate to our principals that we have short-term goals in place that we're going to focus on between now and June of 2025, which is academic achievement, college and career success, socio-emotional learning, family engagement, health and safety. But at the same time, the new superintendent and this new board of seven folks are going to be working in the coming months on trying to put together a multi-year vision that takes us out to 2030, not 2050. Mr. Tillman's extended my contract to 2050. It was 2030. But I just want to make sure that the audience in our community knows that we have goals, not only that are listed there, but part of our LCAP goals. So soon as we get our state data on test, then we will be able to share with the Board of Education how we are doing as part of those five indicators. So as soon as we get those official data pieces, which usually come in the early fall, we'll be able to go back and see how are we doing on these five goals. Next slide. So you heard me mention about the management conference coming up July 20 and 21. We'd like to invite any and all of the board members to come and be part of that management conference if you can. If July 20th is the only day that works for you, great, because I want you to know that Dr. Derek Greenfield will be our presenter that day. You see him there. He's a gentleman that I've worked with over the last five years in terms of working with inclusive excellence and making sure that when we say all kids matter, that it's true. It's not just a logo. And so if you don't know anything about Derek, Derek is a consultant, but he's also worked as vice president at Kentucky State University, at Alcorn State University. And he's worked as a consultant with CBS Sports, the NBA, McDonald's, NCA, Hilton Hotels, really just talking about how you build the culture of seeing the good in each other, how you build systems where you create safe spaces, how you make kids feel safe, and how we celebrate the differences and how you leverage those beautiful differences in making an organization a healthy organization. So we hope that you can join us on July 20. I can assure you that on that day, Derek is going to make you laugh. He's going to make you cry. He's going to make you laugh. He's going to make you cry. He's going to make you laugh. And he's going to make you cry. But at the end of the day, he's going to reinforce that we're one big team working with a common cause. So I hope you can join us on 20th of July. Next, next. Then the last thing I want to share with the board and the community is we were working on a new book called The Mind of the Leader that you see there in front of you. And the reason this book has been so important to me over the years in terms of my philosophy as a leader is I believe in people first, process second. And this book gives us nice common language about how we treat people within an organization, how we value people within an organization. And you've heard me say, we want to be able to see and hear and value every person that is part of this organization. And one of the, one of the quotes that I love about this book is, talks about the presence. And I'll let you read the quote there, but presence is the greatest gift you can give another person. And I truly believe that. And presence is something that can be so small, such an acknowledgement, 30 seconds of time, but gets you such a big return on that. So I wanted the board to know that this is a book that we will be purchasing all of our management team and they'll be getting it in July. And I've gotten, I've ordered copies for the board as well. So if you're interested in reading them and being part of that reading, we certainly appreciate that. But in front of you, you see something called Touchpoint Card. So this is just one avenue of where you can show some presence. And I, and I've given the board a little pack and I'll already a bigger pack. But we made, we asked the, the managers at every meeting to fill out a card every time, at the beginning of the meeting, sometimes in the middle of the meeting, sometimes at the end. And I say, think of someone who's made an impact or helped you, and just write a card and say, thank you. Write a card and say, I see you, I hear you, I value you. That's important. And I think us as, and Mr. Tillman was talking about, you know, we have great power. We have positional authority within an organization. We also have that great power to make somebody feel like they're welcome and noticed in such a big organization. So I'd like to share these cards with you at the board. And, and I would encourage you at any given time, when somebody pops in your mind in the organization, it's done a great thing, maybe not just for you, but for the organization, drop them a card. Write it out. Send it, give it to Karen, Katrin, and Nicole, and we'll be, make sure that we, we send it out to our wonderful staff. They need to hear from us as often, because they do great work, as you see. And many times, they get confused that when we ask questions up here, we're being critical and we're not. And so I'm trying to create that culture of questions make us better. But I also want to create the culture that we see, we hear, and we value. So I wanted to share a little bit about the opportunity that I had with our principals, the opportunity that we'll have with our management team, the objectives, and hope that you can join us in making sure that presence is the greatest gift we can give our employees. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ariano. Lovely presentation. He did ask if he could have my minutes. That's why I went real quickly. So he made it just in time. Thank you, Superintendent Ariano. Oh, thank you. All right, move on to 12.0, action items. 12.1, approval personnel report number 21 dated June 20, 2023, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions, and terminations.
As presented, moved.
It's been moved by Vice President Tillman, seconded by Ms. Chahusky. Any discussion or questions? Hear and see none. Let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to 12.2, approval of 2023, 2024 school plans for student achievement, SIPSA.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Alexander, seconded by Ms. Savio. Any discussion? All right, hear and see none. Let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to 12.3, adoption of 2023, 2024 local control and accountability plan and federal addendum.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Savio, and seconded by Vice President Tillman. Any discussion? All right, hear and see none. Let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to 12.4, adoption of fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget from Business Services.
Moved.
Second. And I have a question.
All right, it was moved by, I believe, Ms. Savio. Was that you? Seconded by Vice President Tillman. Question for Vice President Tillman?
Let's see, is it on page three? The, the total low control funding formula sources, which is our primary funding source, right? The 692 million. But the certificated salaries and classified salaries and the benefits are substantially higher than that. So I'm assuming that some of these other federal and other state revenues come and are not just part of asset money? That's how we end up paying the bills? Or this is a project, projection?
So, yes, it is inclusive asset money. In the next year plan, we have a large amount of SO3 money built into the budget and paying other salaries and benefits and other expenses.
Once it goes, once it goes to where we're going to bill, I guess if you add the three items, the three lines, the 752 million, right? Which is substantially higher than the 692. So I'm just assuming that we, we're going to continue to get a substantial amount of the money that's listed below the LCFF, the other state funds and the federal?
Yes, we will continue getting other state funding ongoing. But keep in mind, the large amount you have built in is SO3 money, close to $400 million. So you, you look at the total operating budget, $1.2 billion general fund. And it is, again, one-third is the asset money.
So our budget will be reduced by that amount in 2024, 2025?
Yeah, going forward, as you know, SO3 money is a deadline to spend September 2024, which is going to overlapping following fiscal year to be spent if any, any remaining balance.
I guess the last question. So none of that money in asset money is being used to pay for people? We don't hire, we didn't hire anybody with that money, did we?
No, you're not. But we are, we can use a part of the money to offset some more for salaries and expenditure, yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to 12.5, approval of home-to-school special education transportation, parent reimbursements.
Moved.
Second.
It's moved by Ms. Chahusky, seconded by Vice President Tillman. Any discussion or questions?
It was moved by Ms. Savio.
Oh, my apologies. It was moved by Ms. Savio. Seconded by Vice President Tillman. Was that correct? All right, a little more enthusiasm over there. Can't tell. All right. No discussion. Let's vote. Thank you, Ms. Savio. My apologies. All right, motion carries. Moving right along, 12.6, approval of payment for, oop, I guess it's the same, almost same one. Approval of payment for home-to-school special education transportation, parent reimbursements for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year.
Moved.
Second.
All right, it's moved by Vice President Tillman and seconded by Ms. Savio. Any discussion or questions? Hear and see none. Let's vote. All right, motion carries. Let's continue to move on. We are getting there. A little more enthusiasm and it'll go by in a blur. 13.0 consent items, 13.1 approval consent items.
Second.
Oh, my goodness.
And I have a poll.
Such a delay on that. All right. This was motioned by Vice President Tillman, seconded by Ms. Alexander, and I believe Ms. Chahusky has an item to poll.
I do. 13.25.
13.25. Any other items to poll? And you'll be recusing yourself or abstaining?
I'll be recusing myself. I am a consultant in their restorative justice programs.
All right. Thank you for the clarification. Any other items to poll or discuss? Okay, let's go ahead and adopt the consent item list as amended. Trying to see if that's correct up there, but it has her as a, as a yes, it should not be a yes, right?
Yeah.
On her vote?
No, she, her is full.
Oh, I'm, oh, just for Jenna, I'm sorry. Okay, my apologies. Okay, so, motion carries. We'll go ahead now and get to 13.25 Agreement with Reachout, an amount of $40,560.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice President Tillman, seconded by Ms. Savios. Any discussion? All right, motion carries. Let's go ahead and move on to 14.0 Review of Board Requests. 14.1 Staff Overview Items, Updates As Requested. All right, I'm not sure who's reading out, but, Ms. Valentine?
Ms. Tillman and Ms. Grande requested that we address concerns about confidentiality and lack of private workspace for departments that will be housed at the Welcoming Resource Center. Ms. Alexander requested a breakdown of the cost of vehicles, cost of fuel, et cetera, breakdown of the types of vehicles, types of EV stations, or is that something that can be partnered with the city? Ms. Alexander requested that we look into grants, specifically with SCE, look into grants and how we can offset and leverage by partnering with the city. Ms. Grande inquired if we are working to send this story out to the local newspaper for a press release, and what we would need to happen for all schools to earn Energy Star certification. Ms. Savios asked to explain the governor's executive order. Do we have to choose pathway one or pathway two? Are we required to implement? Stated she is concerned about the cost per vehicle. Ms. Alexander asked if we have considered leasing versus purchasing, looking ahead if there is a supply chain issue. She also asked if there is a federal legislation. She also asked for clarity about the acquisition strategy. Ms. Savios is following up on the special education waitlist for the ECATs. Prior to the COVID, she asked for ECATs evaluations, and what was the progress made on that list? Ms. Chahuski is reminding everybody that on July 11th, there is a student board members sworn in happening, and she is also reminding everyone that July 28th will be a joint board member retreat. Ms. Alexander asked if we have a plan to improve the Sturgis Building. And Ms. Grande asked if we want to, Ms. Grande wanted to make sure that Anderson's staff are not overlooked and are included in the technology furniture refresh, and that's it.
All right, and I believe Ms. Alexander may have a question or amendment or correction? Ms. Alexander?
Ms. Alexander, the statement I made was just to ask the fleet management team to put together a total cost of ownership. Just put TCO, I think they knew what I was talking about.
All righty, did we capture that? Okay, I have a goal here for 10 o'clock or less, so, it is that time. 15.0.
Okay.
15.1, meeting adjourned. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all right. Everyone have a fantastic evening. We did it, it is now 10 o'clock. Not bad, folks, not bad. And I forgot to say in my board member comments, but happy birthday to my son Hunter tomorrow, it is his birthday, so happy birthday, son.